We'll call to order the April 3 meeting of the Scandia Planning Commission if you would all join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brenda, I think you can hang that up and just put it on speaker because that's what it's picking up.
Sherry?
Yes.
Oh, yay. Okay. All right, so if you've all had a chance to look over the agenda, any changes to the agenda? additions?
Move for approval of the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. And we...public comments? Number three?
Yeah, we have about one person who want to make a public comment.
Oh.
I emailed you about.
Okay. Oh, yes, yes. Okay. Yes, I didn't realize that would come next.
Yeah.
All right, well, so we'll open it up for public comments.
Great. My name is Megan.
Please come forward to the podium and just address the planning commission and give us your name and your address as well, please.
Okay. My name is Megan Richall-Graeber. I recently moved to Scandia May of last year. We moved from North Minneapolis and I am a working social worker at an elementary school in Lake Elmo. It's a federal four special education setting. And I'm here today to request to look at the poultry ordinances and take a look at that again in regards to specifically the setbacks from sideline neighboring properties. I specifically have seven working therapy chickens that my children just absolutely adore and love. And I started training them when I was in North Minneapolis and we misunderstood the regulations around our property lines and property altogether essentially. We do not plan on getting more, but these chickens are deeply loved and are actively working to help children heal and learn. So I'm hopeful that you would, in future meetings, be willing to consider looking at the ordinances again.
Yeah, the issue for their lot in particular, and it probably exists in a lot of places, that if you have... They have, if it's under five acres, and they have a five acre lot, but part of it which is in Goose Lake, so they only have about 2.7 above the ordinary hot water mark, there's a hundred foot setback if you have chickens from every side, which on a 200 foot wide lot or even anything, you know, very, you know, very, you know, narrower than or a little bit wider than 200, you basically can't have chickens.
In Scandia.
In Scandia.
All places.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
So, and I mean, you know, you look at it and you know, probably from when the ordinance were written, I think having urban chickens is probably a lot more acceptable and common. So that's where, you know, what feeling was that we should invite Megan here maybe for, "Look at a future meeting."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention our property is 21-830, Almond Lane.
Okay.
Right on Goose Lake.
Cool.
Those properties are pretty narrow, so we've run into this issue of it being too narrow for us to meet the regulations and the by-bys.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it. Yeah.
Do you want a couple for you roosters?
I don't know, noise variance is...
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
Very loud.
So, do we need to...
We just...
We just need to add it for a future agenda? Okay.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
We're still here.
You may want to turn her up, Brenda.
At this point now, I can hardly hear.
We haven't really been talking for a minute.
Is that better?
Okay. Yeah, I can just barely hear. That's fine.
Okay. So, have you had a chance to look at the minutes? Any changes, modifications to the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes on March 6, 2018, reg re meeting.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, and that brings us to number five, which is amending the zoning VMU A and VMU B zoning districts. Sherry?
Hello?
Hi.
So this is an issue that you all have dealt with at the last couple of meetings. And the source of this was the council and the EDA asking the planning commission to look at options for supporting more independence for businesses in the village area and economic growth in the village area. And so we looked at a few options and found that one that works is commercial condominium. That doesn't need any kind of zoning change. That is simply allowed. A second one is to allow planned unit developments, commercial PUDs, in the village district. And we do need to make a minor change in an amendment to the existing ordinance to allow PUDs in the VMU A and B districts. And so in front of you tonight and for this public hearing is an amendment that adds those uses with the conditional use permit in the VMU A and B districts. Last time, we also talked about some options for allowing some smaller lot sizes in those districts, particularly if there were shared parking and shared septic systems. And the EDA looked at that issue as well. They felt that it was not necessary right now to make that change, but suggested that you guys could include an action step in the 2040 comp plan to look at areas where smaller lot sizes could be permitted and an action step for your zoning ordinance and zoning map to include some new dimensional standards and performance standards in the VMU district. So you could choose that path, or if you feel it needs to happen more quickly than when the comp plan is approved and the ordinance is updated, the planning commission could continue to discuss smaller lot sizes as the third alternative in those districts. But the first issue before you tonight is that zoning amendment to allow PUDs. And then I think it's the second, more of a discussion item about whether you want to continue it at this point or make a recommendation to include that action step in the comp plan.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry.
Yep.
All right, so we will open it up to public comments. If there are any public comments. For public comments, if you could step to the podium and address the planning commission, and then after everybody has a chance to have their say, then we'll close it and have our discussion among the commission. So if anybody has any comments, we'd like to hear them. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of the discussion and move it to the planning commission discussion. Any thoughts?
So the only thing we're doing is adding item N. Is that correct? On page four?
Correct.
Planned unit development. That's the only thing we're doing.
Right.
Right. So, and then we can add, and we're going to talk about the comp plan later on, and we can add this as an action step, the smaller lot sizes. I think that would be better as an action step for the comp plan to look at that.
I do too.
More...
And at the EDA, I think the EDA said they would be supportive of it if there was common sewer and septic, probably common water and common sewer treatment.
Yeah.
But, you know, which we don't have, so I think that's really a future item.
Yeah.
I think the other thing with this is that Sherry, you had mentioned, is in that same zoning chapter, there's a section on PUDs that says that PUDs are acceptable in these zoning districts, however, when you get to the actual zoning districts, these weren't listed.
Okay.
The PUDs weren't listed.
They were already...
So it's really bringing the two sections of the development code into sync.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any other thoughts? Okay, so anyone want to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 122. Per whatever's in front of us here. This doesn't have a number on it, does it?
No ordinance is, don't get a number till they go to council.
Till they go to council, okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, all right, and so that brings us to the discussion for the variance on the setback for the accessory building at 22331 Peabody Trail North. Sherry?
Okay, so this is a request from Sean and Ashley Maloney, who are in the general rural district at 22331 Peabody Trail North. That's in the general rural district. And they are asking for a variance to construct a new detached garage closer to the road right of way than the principal building, the home of the property. And it's just a little under 10 acres in size. There are some provisions in the ordinance for letting people have an accessory building closer to the roadway, for instance, if they're on lake shore. The Maloney's property doesn't meet those criteria, so they are here asking for a variance, which is their option for trying to have that structure closer to the road. Their rationale for that involves the topography on the property and that the location allows them to locate the garage with good topography that will not be too close to their septic system and well, and so that they can use the existing driveway on the property. We only allow one driveway per property in Scandia. Generally, they are consistent with all the other setbacks. They meet the other requirements other than the relationship to the road. They meet the requirements for number and size of accessory structures, height, all the other standards in the ordinance. I think one thing for you guys to think about, and if you went out for the site evaluation, consider whether any additional screening would be needed if this were approved and they were allowed to have the garage in the location they're proposing. We have criteria in the ordinance for granting variances, and so the planner's report includes my findings related to those conditions or those criteria. The first one is that it needs to be generally in harmony with the purpose and intent of the comp plan and the zoning ordinance, and I'm recommending that it is. Granting the variance would help to preserve woodlands. It would help to maintain existing screening along Peabody Trail. And it addresses that issue of, "We can only have one driveway for parcel," so locating the garage in a location where they can use the existing driveway is more consistent with the standards. The use of a reasonable use on the property, single-family homes and accessory buildings are reasonable. The difficulties were not created by the landowner, but they're rated, well, it is the topography of the parcel and the locations of the existing septic system and well on the parcel. Placing the garage where they're proposing would not alter the essential character of the area. The woodlands all around their property help to screen this building from view, both from the roadway and from adjacent parcels. It's not primarily an economic purpose. It's really related more to the topography and the limits of location for this building on the site. It won't impair the supply of lighter air to adjacent properties. It'd probably be the minimum actions in order to eliminate those practical difficulties, let them place it in a location similar to where they're proposing. And this will have nothing to do with impairing sunlight for solar energy systems. So the planner's recommendation is to grant the variance, so let them be a minimum of 100 feet from the right of way of Peabody Trail North. And on page six, there are some conditions, mostly general conditions, that we place on any accessory structure that are recommended along with approval.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. And so we will now open it up to the public hearing. If anybody would like to share anything about this? Or did Sherry cover it pretty well for you guys?
Did pretty good.
Okay. All right, then we'll close the public hearing portion and move on to the commission discussion. Greg, did you want to share kind of about what you saw at the site a little bit?
Well, I think that building site is by far and away the best spot for the garage.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it makes total sense. It's the high point. Tom and I went out on the road and looked from the road where the garage location will be, and there's so many trees there, you're not even going to see it in the summer. And it's a, it's a good location.
Okay. Sherry, I don't know if you have looked on the topo map much, or if you visited the site, well, you probably, probably not, but there seemed to be a little bit of a thought for another location that was possible. Behind the house, now, not directly behind the house, but behind the house to the west a little bit. I don't know if that's legitimate. It would create fairly tough difficulties with driveways.
It would be to the east.
To the east?
Yeah, west.
Sorry.
West is Peabody.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was assuming this map is, was north-south.
No, sorry.
Nope, that's my bad.
You thinking back in here, or?
I'm thinking if you go behind the house to the left slightly, off the rear-left corner of the house.
Off here?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
But I think if cursor didn't show up well, or I think their septic system is right behind the house.
Yeah.
Kind of like right where the cursor is.
He'd have, he'd have issues with the mound system if it went back there.
It's a pretty big building, too.
He'd probably would have to relocate his tanks.
Something like that.
Yeah, and the back of his house would be looking into a garage at that point.
Okay, that's why I thought, I knew his septic was back there someplace.
I mean, if you brought in a lot of fill, you might be able to create a building pad, but it doesn't make sense with that high point being the ideal location.
Bringing in a lot of fill is not really ideal. I mean, from an environmental standpoint.
Yeah, it'd be very disruptive to his lot.
You'd take a lot of trees out.
It would take a lot of trees?
Yeah.
Okay, well, he's going to take some, end up taking some trees out with this thing, too.
Oh, yeah.
I mean...
Well, I mean, he'd be taking out trees just to get to the site a lot more.
Okay. Okay, all right.
And I don't know if we want a whole building next to the mound system. Is there setbacks from a mound system?
There is.
What is that?
I believe it's 50 feet.
Oh, then that would be out.
That would eliminate that anyway.
Well, it's the, yeah, septic system's something like right here.
Yeah, he's got a big mound system.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right on the edge of that path that goes to that field. I don't think you'd have 50 feet there to...
Mount system comes like, so you had that four-wheeler trail that looked like you had driven back there? So the septic comes up about to where that, that trail was, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would, it would put his building down in that hole.
It would, he'd have to go much further over and bring in more fill.
Yes.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it would be not on the hill so much as more down in here somewhere. Well, I guess there's...
Yeah, which means up north probably more.
Where's the scale on this? It's 132 feet, so this would be 75 feet or something.
Somewhere around there.
So...
65.
So...
So I have lost the audio through my computer now, and I'm only hearing through the phone. So I'm getting part of the conversation. It sounds like there was a suggestion that there was another location that might work that would not require a variance, but the problems with that location are the closeness to the septic system, that it would require more fill to the below spot, and there might be more tree loss. Am I getting it correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
And, yeah, with the setback from the mound system, Sherry, it certainly would push that building pad down lower into that low elevation area.
Okay.
And he would have to create a real substantial pad to make that work. I don't, I don't think that's a good solution.
So the variance we're talking about is to locate the accessory building closer to the road than the front line of the primary residence, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And less than 200 feet.
Is not necessarily the 200 feet. It is the house.
Right.
Well, it's both.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, the setback is, for a property this size, it can be closer to the, it could be in front of the house, but it still needs to be 200 feet back from the road.
Okay, so it can't, there's no variance required if it's at least 200 feet from the road. But in this case, it's 100 feet from the road or something.
Right.
So hence the variance. Okay. Well, I'm satisfied with that. I think this is the most reasonable location.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Unless he goes all the way back here.
I recommend, I make a motion to approve the Maloney variance application.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So that will go to the city council, two weeks, in two weeks from now, and they'll make the final decision on that.
Do I need to attend that?
It's up to you.
I'll be out of town, so I can see my spokesperson.
Sure. If they might have questions, it might not be a bad idea.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, thank you very much. All right, and that brings us to the discussion on the variance from the wetland setback for the driveway and grading on Manning Trail. Sherry?
All right, so this is a request from John Olson, who is the designer of the driveway, and no relation to Gerald and Judith Olson, who are the owners of the property at 11360 232nd Street North. And this is a request that is an after-the-fact request for a driveway that was already built, but does not meet the required setback from the wetland of 75 feet. It's only about 29 feet from the wetland. The property is about 22 and a half acres, and it's located in the general rural district. Neil knows the history of all this better than I do, and fill in if you have questions on it. The owners received an access permit for the driveway from Washington County, and they received the required watershed permit.
We lost you, Sherry.
Are you there?
Time's up.
Uh-oh. Quarter, the quarter ran out. Forgot to put another quarter in. All right, shall we, are we trying to get her back, or?
She'll probably call.
She'll call back. Okay, so she'll wait for a minute or two?
Yeah, she was just starting her staff report.
She's trying to call me.
Oh, she's trying to call you. Okay.
See if she figures out. She's, she's going to have to call in there because she's calling me through FaceTime or something.
Oh.
And I, it's, I don't have FaceTime.
Oh, where's my phone?
There we go.
Hey, Sherry, we lost you, but you're back. Okay, I'll put you back on speakerphone. You're back.
We're back. All right, so we were in the middle of this story of how this happened. So Neil met up with the realtor at the site and told him that they needed to get a wetland determination or delineation to identify that setback, and also that they would need permits, but they failed to do that. So Neil discovered the driveway while we were on our annual site visit to the Scandia mine, and that is the source of this application. The applicants are asking to keep the driveway in the current location. And their rationale for that is that the access meets the site distance requirement from the county. The location preserves some trees on a berm next to Manning Trail, and the location is on a higher ground than the adjacent areas and would minimize fill. Neil has some photos and a video that he can show you. I imagine some of this is hard to see on the site of it. The road location is a good one, and there aren't a lot of good access points on the roadway. So we're not questioning the access at Manning. The question is the driveway location, and could it have been constructed in a place that would have avoided the wetland? There's about 200 feet between the required wetland setback and the property line. And Jay Rich has looked at it and determined that there are not wetlands within this area. So the staff analysis related to this one starts with a look at the comprehensive plan, which requires protection of wetlands. And while it allows driveways as accessory uses, it also requires the protection of natural resources. And so my analysis suggests that this is not in harmony with the comp plan, because there is a location, or also other locations where the driveway could be placed to the south of where it is now, where it would meet the setback requirements from the wetland, but still is workable as a driveway location. It meets the other setback requirements. It doesn't have any other real issues in terms of the driveway location. But the findings, again, suggest it's not meeting the goals of the comp plan to protect wetlands. It's a reasonable use, but for the third criteria, the landowner has created the practical difficulties. The practical difficulties are not a physical characteristic on the site. It's something the landowners created by placing the driveway where it was placed within the wetland setback area. There also is some fill that was removed from a berm along Manning that was placed within that wetland setback. Granted, the variance would not alter the essential character of this area, but there are not really practical difficulties that require the placement of the driveway within that wetland setback area. There are other locations available. Granted, the variance will not impair the supply of lighter air. It's not an issue for solar energy, but the staff analysis suggests the variance is not needed, the driveway can be placed where it will not impact the wetland setback, and the fill materials could be moved to another location to get it out of the wetland area as well. So the staff recommendation from Neil and me is to deny the variance and to require the applicant to get a driveway permit for a driveway in a location that is outside the wetland setback, and that as part of it, they should move the fill that was placed within the wetland setback as well. So that's the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. All right, we will open it up to public comment, if anybody would like to share. Please state your name and address for the...
Sure. I'm John Olson from City of Forest Lake. I was the excavator for the project. And I want to thank you for coming out today, and Greg and Tom, thank you for coming out to go to the site. I understand that I don't make the 75-foot setback, but I guess my concern is, you know, by moving that driveway down, I'm just going to go up here, is that, you know, we're really going to be pushing, filling this lower area in, that's a natural lower area, by filling that in, we're going to be pushing that wire somewhere. And I think that wire is going to have to go into the south and going to the, basically going across the neighbor's driveway. Is what my concern is. And I originally put this in, and I know it was after the fact that I can have the permit. I had the one permit that, from the county, and I got the permit from the watershed. But the original survey, you know, we were well outside the 75-foot setback, the original survey, which I know was only good for five years, and this is outdated. But my intent was, when we built it, I want to stay in the highest part of the property, and that's how it got built, and unfortunately, it's not within your 75-foot setback.
Okay.
So that's, that's my concern about it, and I was hoping to get to meet Sherry tonight because I thought she might be able to be at the site too, but unfortunately not, so...
Okay.
Neil has seen the site and has a video of it that I have looked at, and I hope we can show that if the city members have questions about it.
Yep. Yeah, I'm having issues with it. And this is the, the original survey that I think that the Olsons provided with their application.
What is that, I'm not understanding what that dashed line, the funny-looking dashed line, all that is. What is all, is that wetland area? What is that?
That's a setback. That's a setback. That's a 75-foot setback.
Oh, that's the setback. Okay, okay. And where's the, where is the current driveway in relation to this?
So Manning is up.
Manning is up, correct. Do you have that new survey? So, hang on. I think I was, I was right there before, so...
Okay, there's Manning. Okay. Okay, there's Manning, okay.
So there's Manning, there's a wetland, 75-foot setback, and I think this will be the new survey. She keeps calling me on FaceTime. So this is... Let me move this down a little bit.
Brenda?
Yeah, Sherry, they're looking at the survey.
Okay. I honestly can't hear any of the conversation at this point.
Do, does she want to try and call me on FaceTime? Would that be helpful? To call me on FaceTime?
Brenda, do you have the, do you have that all the way up?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, maybe tilt it this way. Is that better, Sherry?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay. There, I think that's what you're looking for, John, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, okay. Anything else, John?
Nope. That's just my concern, giving me throwing a low area in, it's, you know, it's a natural low area already, and that's no reason to build the driveway on a high spot, so we can let the water to the both sides.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead. If you could state your name and, and address. Okay.
There seems to be a question in two areas here. One is the setback from, as the driveway moves in. But the question of the point of entry, the property from Manning. I'd like to point out that that was a joint decision made by John, myself, a number of other people. But the key people involved was the company. They had, what transpired was, they had a cable that ran on their easement, but they also had a cable for fiber optics that were on our property.
Okay.
And they shared in the decision of where to put the entrance point.
Okay.
And that was county, that was us, and that was primary then. And because of the size of the berm, it was a fairly big job for them, and a very, very expensive job. And so they participated in that, and even to move it at this point in time would be a major, major issue.
I, I think actually that we are not, not saying that the point of entry is a problem. Actually, in Sherry's report, she mentions that the driveway or the entry location is a good location, actually. Her main, or our main concern is the, the continuation of the driveway, because what it probably should have done is curved to the, to the left a little bit. So. Any other comments on this one? All right, we'll close the public discussion and open up to the commission. Sherry, one of the, are you still there, Sherry?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so one of the things that came up as we were out there, that I was questioning was, now, in, in previous discussions, and I know we haven't made a final change on the setbacks, but we had discussed possibly changing the setbacks for some wetlands that were not as high of quality.
Yeah.
And, and so Neil provided this, us with this report, and I don't really understand it other than that it seems to be a fairly low-quality wetland. And so my question is, and, and of course, we're at, at 29 feet, the current driveway is at 29 feet. So if, you know, if we were to make some changes to the wetland ordinance, what type of effect would that have on this variance request?
Well, and I had asked Jay for some comments on that, because, you know, the wetland report says that this is a re-tenary grass-dominated wetland. So I had asked for some thoughts from him on quality, and he has never gotten back to me.
Okay.
There wasn't anything in the delineation of auto, of functions and values assessment. But without hearing something from Jay, I think it's hard for us to know what that standard would be.
Okay.
If we, if we had changed the shoreland ordinance at this point and had, and were using the watershed standards.
And, and the watershed standards, if I'm looking at this correct, are 50 feet from lower-grade wetlands? Is that?
In the proposed.
In the proposed, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, so we'd still be 25 feet over our, or, you know, 20 feet over the?
That'd be my best guess, that we, that this wetland, partly because it's connected to a larger wetland. It's not a small, isolated one.
Okay.
Probably would be somewhere in that 50-foot buffer requirement area. But without Jay, I can't say that for sure.
Okay. All right.
And, and the watershed district did not have a problem issuing a permit? Is that what I'm reading?
The watershed district, they would, the rules are odd with the watershed district, but this is not something that would be permitted by them. You can actually fill within the wetland buffer, according to the watershed district rules.
Okay.
Really?
Yep, unless there's a subdivision.
Okay.
Or unless there's.
Or a structure.
Yeah.
They don't allow structures within the buffer, but they do not consider driveway a structure.
Okay.
But we do.
But we do.
Okay, so that's, that's why there's a, a difference of.
Yeah, okay.
If we were to require them to remove the fill that was placed within that setback, are we doing more harm than leaving it? What's the reason for removing fill that may be somewhat stabilized now? And to remove it would be to dig it back up and expose.
Cause more erosion, yeah.
Possibly erosion and stuff like that.
That's a good question, which we probably don't have an answer to, because nobody here is a expert. That's a great question, though. That makes sense, that makes a lot of sense to me, if you're digging up more. So, Sherry, is there any other? Is it ramifications, is there any repercussions that the city has? If there was a variance granted for some reason, would the city, what? I, I guess is there, what I'm trying to ask is, is there any other ramifications other than moving the driveway that the city would take? Maybe Neil has a question for you.
And even like the crown of the driveway, maybe, I'm not sure whether it's at, you know, 29 feet, but I think, you know, what, you know, Sherry's recommendation was, was to basically move the fill off the wetland side over to the other side.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or somewhere else on the property, wherever, you know, that's my guess, is they move it to a quote of a location of.
You know, because if you, if you look, this was off of our GIS. I mean, you know, the area, you know, because these are, you know, two-foot contours.
Okay.
And the area is relatively flat. I mean, the lower area, you know, he was, you know, seeking to avoid, is this that's, you know, right at that 960, the orange topo line. And then this is also a 960 line, so, you know, where.
So that's 970 in between?
No. It's, these are two-foot contours.
Oh.
The darker ones are, are the 10-foot.
Okay.
So, I mean, he came in here and kind of came around the edge here, but you're really not talking about a big difference in grade.
Okay.
Until you get past the wetland, then it starts going up that hill.
Okay.
So if he were to reapply, let's say we deny this, and then we require that he restore it, what do we restore it to? Who determines what was there originally? Do we go by?
He did not hit the wetland, so it really, probably, he's got, he did a great job on the silt fence along the wetland. I mean, so, I mean, realistically, he could probably just replant that with whatever he put in there originally, because I think he, you know, put in erosion control mat, and I think he put in, like, grass into that. You know, cut grass in.
I guess that's what I'm getting at. My original question, is it doing more harm to remove that fill when it's somewhat established already?
But it's not, but it's not actually in the wetland, it's.
No, but it's in, it's in a wetland setback.
So if you, so Tom's point is, you dig all that out.
I have a question.
That's a really valid question.
Sherry, I have a question for you. Sherry?
Say it again?
Can you hear me, Sherry?
Now I can, yes.
Okay, when, when Dan and Tom were, and I were out there tonight, pushing, John was nice enough to state the driveway where it would have to be relocated to meet the setbacks. And as you know, that's a low area there that apparently does hold water. Not, not year-round, but it does fill up with water, and if we fill all that in for the driveway, could that potentially force that water over to the neighbor's driveway? I don't know what elevation the neighbor's driveway is at.
Yeah, I, and I don't either. Someone would have to really do a grading plan for the new location to show, you know, which way the water would rain, and whether you could still keep it on the property or not.
Because I, I think with the driveway fill for the new location, it's gonna squeeze out that entire lower ponding area. And I don't know if that has any impact on anything else.
Yeah, because it'll have to curve and come all the way down here to come through, come through right through the middle of that. But it's fairly, I mean, if you look at the contours that come down, this is just, this is all the same. I mean, it will flow across the property line, I don't know about onto the driveway, but it'll flow.
Well, their driveway's pretty close, I think.
Is it, is it right here somewhere?
I don't want to create another problem by filling another low area.
When I think on the neighbor's property, there is also, you know, a little bit right over the border, there's another wetland.
Right.
So when I did, let me zoom out of this a little bit. On this sketch, what I looked at is, well, there's the driveway.
Oh, the driveway's right there.
75 feet from the other, you know, from the other wetland, you know, so.
Okay.
It is right there.
Yeah, so, okay, so the driveway's right, and there's, there's another wetland there? Where's the?
On the neighbor's property.
So the neighbor's driveway is right on top of the wetland.
Right, there's a wetland.
It's definitely within the setback.
There's the low area.
Yes.
So if he comes up the driveway and turns it, fill that up. It's almost like we're missing a couple pieces of information.
Well, I guess, if you guys look at it, another question would be, if there's a wetland there to the south, if we, if we required him to move the driveway, would he be within the setback requirement from that wetland? But presumably not if there's 200 feet there.
Yeah, he'd be close, but probably not.
About 260 feet between the property line and the wetland.
Okay.
So, you know, and then from the 75-foot setback from the neighbor's wetland, probably goes 50 feet, so you still have, you know, 140 feet of a gap there that you could have the driveway through without being in a wetland setback.
Yeah, he could, he could do it, but.
They have a stake.
Well, a couple, a couple of things I would say. One is, I, I think you'd almost, we'd almost have to ask, you know, the city engineer to take a quick look at this and give his thoughts if the driveway were moved, you know, whether you could deal with drainage without having it, having it go on the neighbor property. I, I don't do enough grading anymore to do that analysis quickly, but probably Orion could look at this and say, yeah, if you make it, you know, move it, you know, 50 feet to the south, it's gonna push water onto the neighbor's property. Or there'd be another way to create a swell that would carry the water in another direction pretty easily.
I don't see how we can make much of a decision without that.
But I think one of the hard things, you know, for Neil is that if, if they had come in and obtained the right permit, part of the discussion would have been, and you know, there's some wetlands out there, and you have to stay 75 feet away.
Right, right. So, yeah, so I think we have some issues here. As one, we can't, we, we have to, in order to grant a variance, we have to meet all of the criteria. And we are not meeting all of the criteria, as far as I can see, because this is not, if it had been done correctly, it would have been fine. Everything would have been fine. So.
It may not have been fine, but it more than likely would be in a different location than it is now.
Right, right. Well, but it, and, and there's plenty of space.
I mean, the best solution still may be someplace between where it's at and 75 feet.
Right. Oh, well, okay, sure.
You know, but better than this.
Yeah.
Than what's proposed.
Right. So. I guess I'm at, I feel, I'm feeling at a loss, because I, I think that we, number one, we don't have quite enough information to grant a variance, but I don't think we can grant a variance as it is, because they're not meeting the practical difficulty criteria.
Well, we need more information on that low spot.
On whether or not it's gonna, yeah.
We fill that up, does that impact anything? Maybe it doesn't, but I'd hate to have him put in the driveway and then have the neighbor complain.
Yeah, that, right.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think the only thing we can do is, is deny the variance, and if the owners want to come back with a different application with other criteria or other information, we can.
With more information.
Address that.
Or we can table this, we can table it. We can table this until we get a report from the city engineer, possibly until we get a report from Jay on the quality of this wetland that we're talking about, which.
That would help.
It's maybe.
We have the delineation report.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just that we don't know how to interpret it.
I don't know what it means.
Yeah, the delineation didn't include a functions and values assessment that would lead to that description of how wide of a buffer would have been required based on the wetland values. So we could work harder to get that from Jay.
And perhaps also, we can talk about, you know, moving forward on our shoreland ordinance.
And, and if the shoreland ordinance gets passed, this may be an issue of 50 feet instead of 75 feet.
Right.
Depending on, on the analysis of, of the type of wetlands it says.
Yeah, but it's still not 29.
Right, it's not 29.
Yeah.
True.
Right, that's, that's, that's right, yeah.
I'd move the table.
Wait a second.
I agree.
And the information we need is, I guess, the wetland information. And I'd still like to know what would require to remove that fill that's been placed.
What kind of damage that would.
What damage, is that, are we gonna do something worse?
So we need the engineering report on that, too.
Or not?
Yeah.
I think that should be answered, and then maybe some.
Well, the city engineer would have to provide it, yeah.
So, okay, so the motion to table until we get more information. What, so we need specific information. We need the report on the erosion control for removing the fill. The report on if we move the driveway closer to the property line to the, to a better location, is that gonna cause problems for the neighbor's driveway?
Impact there.
And, and also the impact the wetland on the other side of, across the property line. Three, we need to know specifically what type of wetland this is, as far as quality and grade goes, in layman's terms, so that we can match it up with what would be. And then also, the, I would like to, I, I have a problem with granting a variance, an after-the-fact variance, with no ramifications, and I don't know, I just feel like that's inappropriate. Neil, I mean, is, is that, is that a thing? I mean.
Well, the cost of moving the driveway is a penalty in itself.
Well, well, right, but if we grant a variance, first of all, there's no practical difficulty, so granting a variance is, is the problem. That's the problem.
It was avoidable, because, you know, had, you know, they applied for a grading permit, we probably would have had Ryan look at it, all those other issues would have been addressed. The driveway would not have impacted the wetland.
Right.
And it wouldn't have been the least bit of an issue.
Right. So, so at this point, if it turns out that the engineering report says that we're gonna cause more damage than, than good by moving the driveway, so we're granting, we'd be granting a variance for, without meeting all the. for, without meeting all the criteria,
Which we wouldn't do.
Which we wouldn't do. So we're basically granting a variance because it's the lesser of two evils? I mean, that.
It's a question, it's a legal question whether you can grant a, whether you can recommend granting a variance when there's no practical difficulty.
Okay, so maybe.
That's not.
And I don't have a problem with that. I think it, that we can't grant it, because it doesn't meet the criteria.
Yeah, I, I think it's.
However, if, what I was wondering, if the applicant were to come back in, to give him some direction, and whether we would be, if he moves the driveway and leaves the fill, is that a better situation than moving the fill as well? Or what is the best situation here? That's what I'm looking at.
Well, my, my questions are, is this, is this done through their request, uh, and for their proper request for a permit? And so, so they will be taking care of these reports that we're asking for? Is that how it's gonna go forward?
The, the cost will be placed on the?
Oh, I mean, there's, you know, there's an escrow, you know, that they put up when they apply for a grading permit. After the fact, they did apply for a grading permit, but I mean, we also had the, the setback issue, so we have not acted on that.
Okay.
So I mean, if, you know, that's always the, the next course of action, is, I mean, if, you know, if the planning commission recommended that council deny, and council deny, then we process the, you know, the grading permit, and, you know, have Ryan look at it.
So if we, if we table, then we're implying that we will look at a variance. Is that correct?
That's a good point, yeah, which.
If we play, or table and request them to come back with a modified application? Or do we just plain deny? And they can still come back in with an application?
Well, if, but if we deny it, then, so, okay. Let's talk about scenarios. What happens if we deny this outright? They have to move the driveway.
Well, you, you make a recommendation. You don't, you can't.
Well, okay, well, right, okay, with city council denies, yeah.
The city council denies?
Yeah.
Then they would have to, uh, regrade the property, so that the driveway is outside of the setback.
Okay. Uh, but they would have to apply for a driveway permit?
No, they have a driveway permit. They've already applied for a grading permit.
Okay.
So what we would do then is evaluate the, you know, the move of the driveway based upon that grading permit.
Okay.
Yeah, there'd be no variance. It'd just be a straightforward.
Correct.
Driveway project.
Okay. And, and, and that would involve, that would involve the, the city engineer who would say, don't remove the fill, possibly, because that's gonna cause damage, and do this, and this, and this.
Possibly.
Whatever the city engineer thinks is best.
Then I rescind my motion. So they seconded it, did they?
They did.
I seconded, seconded they did.
You want to rescind it?
Well, so, so emotions on the table. I think we.
Emotions on the table.
We vote, and then we can have another motion if that doesn't pass.
Okay.
Right?
Or, or I, I think the thing is, Tom can withdraw his motion.
I withdraw it.
All right.
And the seconded, we gotta withdraw it, too, right?
Yeah. You withdraw?
You withdraw?
Yeah, I second my motion.
Okay.
Or withdraw my motion.
Second the withdraw.
All right, my new motion is to deny the permit.
Okay.
And I will second the.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, this recommendation, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't catch the motion.
The motion was to deny the permit, or the variance request.
Okay.
Which carried.
So that goes ahead to the council then next week?
Yeah. So this'll go to the council, and they'll, um, they'll look at it next week. And, uh, I, just to, as, as a point of explanation, we have criteria that are specifically required every time we look at a variance. So we look at all, and there, I think there's seven of them. And it has to meet that require, that, that criteria every time. And if we just throw out some of those criteria for one person, then we have to throw it out for the next.
Oh, I fully understand.
Okay, so I, I'm trying to say is, we're trying to be reasonable, but.
Best situation for all parts.
Yeah, yeah, we.
I, I get, we understand.
Yeah, we, we want to be reasonable, but we also need to be.
Yeah, and also, we've made a recommendation, the council will vote on it.
Right, so this is not final yet. It'll go to the, the council in two weeks. Okay? All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Sherry. All right. So that brings us back to the, uh, shoreline ordinance. Chapter five.
Tom? Ready for the shoreline discussion?
We are.
So, four months now, you guys have been working on updating the fleet shoreline ordinance, using the DNR model ordinance as a base for that ordinance. We have a few decisions to make yet about it, and you guys have sent this off to the local lake association, and scheduled this hearing tonight to try to get some feedback on some of those important issues, which I'll, I'll highlight it for a few minutes here before we open up for public discussion. One of the issues, and we haven't talked about this deeply until now, but it, it became apparent to Neil and I within the last month, is that, um, an important discussion for you guys is gonna be the jurisdiction, what the city wants to include in shoreline areas within Scandia. And Neil has a very handy dandy map that helps to illustrate the quandary here. What, um, the DNR's language really emphasizes cities regulating shoreline on water bodies that are public water bodies that are more than 10 acres in size. And that's a certain set of water bodies you'd all be familiar with, in the city Big Marine and Bone Lake and, and the Bigger Lake. But based on the rules, um, in state rules, there are other water bodies that can also be regulated in shoreline, and that you guys in the past have regulated. So your current shoreline ordinance includes not only those public waters that are 10 acres in size or larger, but also some wetlands that are two and a half acres and larger in size. But the current ordinance doesn't include all of those wetlands. So, you kind of have three choices here about the, the jurisdiction of this ordinance. One is, you could limit it just to the public waters in the city that are 10 acres in size or larger. You could keep the current set of water bodies that you are regulating in the shoreline ordinance. Or you could decide to add some of those water bodies that are two and a half acres in size or larger that are not currently included in the ordinance. Um, so that is one major decision we need to make before we finalize this ordinance. The other kind of big decisions are those related to the lot area and width standards in section six of the ordinance. The DNR's model ordinance standards would allow smaller lots in shoreline than your current shoreline ordinance. And the, the difference is significant. For instance, the DNR, um, in around lakes like Big Marine, the recreational development lakes, allows a minimum lot size of about an acre. Your current ordinance is a minimum two and a half acres. Now, we all know there are many smaller lots around some of the lakes already. So the, the impact of lot size would largely be to some of the larger properties that remain around the lake, or it would be to people who own multiple properties, um, and whether they would have to combine them all to meet the minimum lot size or not. If you adopted the DNR standards, there would be fewer non-conforming lots around the lakes and, and fewer requirements to combine them when people get variances and things. But that is, you know, that's, I think, one of your big decisions is whether you're gonna keep the current standards with the larger lots, or whether you wanna move more to the DNR model of smaller lots. This is, this impacts not only this part of the ordinance, but it strongly influences that PUD section. Because the number of units that's allowed in each of the tiers is based on the density that's permitted in the zoning ordinance. So if you adopted the DNR standards, in PUDs also, you would be allowing more lots, higher density than you would be if you kept the current city standard. A second section that is similar in importance is the one related to height and design of structures. Um, the city has some wider setback requirements, particularly around natural environment lakes than the DNR ordinance. I think yours are similar around the recreational development lakes, but you have some wider ones for structures and setbacks for natural environment lakes. And, and the biggest thing that the DNR would let you change is that, um, it allows much smaller setbacks if lots are on the city 201 subject system. It will allow some structures to be 50 feet from the lake, rather than 100 feet that is now required if they were hooked up to the city system. Scandia has never used that provision in its shoreline ordinance, but it is there. Another section we added is the one you talked about previously about wetland setbacks, that changes, replaces the current requirement for a 75-foot setback from all wetlands, and replaces it with the, um, a setback that is based on the wetland buffer requirements used by local watershed districts, so that lower-quality wetlands would have a narrower setback than high-quality wetlands. There are some changes in the grading and spilling section of the ordinance to lower the threshold, uh, where a permit would be needed for people who wanna do grading within shoreline areas. Um, and then a final section that is kind of a big one to get some feedback on is that PUD section, um, to allow people to do PUDs in shoreline areas, which requires, um, a dedication of a significant area next to the lake within the shore impact zone as permanent open space. And in exchange for that, allows some higher densities, you know, 300 or 600 feet back from the lake. So, in terms of what the major changes would be from your current ordinance, I think those are the, the major ones. And what we're hoping for tonight is some comments, um, and I know you've received some comments that were emails, comments, um, but also to get some more comments from the public about whether they would prefer you to keep current standards or, um, move more to the model ordinance standards.
Okay, thank you, Sherry.
Yep.
All right, so, uh, with that, we will open up, um, for the public hearing on this. If, uh, anybody would like to make any comments on the shoreline ordinance. Uh, public hearing for the shoreline ordinance, if anybody would like to make any comments. Yes, uh, come up and please state your name and address, please.
This is where I'm?
Yes.
Okay, Tony Valles. I'm at 12100 196th Street, and I'm also on the, uh, Lake Shore Association Board for Big Marine. Uh, I did submit a written, uh, just at the end of the day, comment about, most specifically about the PUD. The, the concept there that I was putting forward is, a model ordinance is a model that's trying to go over everything and be general for big, small, and whatever. And in Big Marine's case, uh, I think we've got, I would like to see the ordinance deal with Big Marine. You know, this will deal with Big Marine, but Big Marine's unique. It's got two very large parcels that are undeveloped or underdeveloped that I've identified there. The Girl Scout camp and the, and the farm in the north, north arm. Neither of which are currently being considered for development, but you're passing something that will be around a long time, and who knows what the future will bring there. So, trying to deal with the ordinance in context of Big Marine. And I, the PUD is complicated, and I was trying to absorb what it was, and, uh, the engineer provided, I guess the DNR provided some explanation with a worksheet, and the worksheet showed a 20-acre parcel or something slightly smaller than that, with the various bonuses and things like that. Ends up with, for 20 acres, ends up with 88 units that are allowed, some of them further off the lake. But both of those properties that I speak of are well over 100 acres. So, 88, you know, times, you know, there's six times that. So, potentially with the PUD, if all of that land was developed, we're talking about hundreds of, of units. Now, there's other things that impact development, you know, the other, the, you go wetland that's on the site, and drainage, and other economic features. I'm not sure anyone's looking at doing a 500-unit development soon. You know, there's, there's economic realities. But what I was hoping we could look at is, is something that's specific to those locations. What do we want to have happen there? And be very specific about, you know, we want X percentage of, of, uh, space dedicated. You know, they're suggesting something in the model, but we have the benefit of looking at how it applies to a specific lake, and, and look at it that way, rather than in the abstract. The abstract, it's, it might make sense, but let's look at that location. You know, what's gonna happen at the farm? You know, what, what do we wanna, how do we wanna have that look? And I'm suggesting it's, it's a great amenity to have a lot of, a lot of space there, and, and be careful, because what you do lasts a long time. So that's one point. And then a, a small one is the dilemma that I think Sherry addressed, is we've got small lots. There are also homeowners on very small lots, 50-foot lots versus this, you know, a couple hundred acres of lot. And how applying the same criteria for both puts both, I think, at somewhat of a disadvantage for people that are, have two 50-foot lots who are thinking of combining and that. So, is it possible to separate those and think about those two as separate entities? And, 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 and deal with them? You don't have to, I don't think. Apply the same process, the same situation to both, because, you know, we've got an existing reality there at Big Marine, and probably in your other spaces around the, around the community. Let's, let's think about how they just apply there. And, you know, one of the specific things on the, the use, and my property went through a, a, an, a variance for lot area coverage, and I'm on a 50-foot lot. Uh, and I'm over that, and I got a variance for it. What I, when looking at how the new one applied, what I noticed, and maybe it was the same, but I don't think so, is gravel and decks are now considered as suggested to be part of the impervious area. And I, I know from some of the work I do professionally that not all gravel laid has the same rating of perviability. So, maybe just all gravel driveways and all gravel surfaces and all decks are not created equal. Perhaps there's some way to, to look at that with some sort of rating and, um, try to deal with that, because on the small lots, 25% gets sucked out pretty quickly. And it would be nice to have some of these older cabins that are not in the greatest shape, be able to have some way to, um, upgrade and modernize. I'm sure you're being asked that for variances regularly here over, over time, so that's another two cents. But I got it.
Thank you.
Did you? Discuss that, or should we keep going?
Uh, no, go, go ahead.
My name is Mike Wehrt. I have a summertime cabin, 12970 182nd Street North. Don't mail anything to it. It's my city address. Neil has it on my email. We, we mail disappearers out there, since we're not there typically. First of all, thank you for the, the work you've done on the ordinance. It's tremendous amount of work. Uh, and generally, from, uh, with Tony, he's on the board. I'm the president of the Big Marine Lakes Association. Lakes Association. It looks like a good document. So I've got a couple of questions or a couple of comments, part of it to expand on what Tony said. There is, I believe it's a DNR ordinance, if it's not DNR, it's some other government agency, that says, and you can, you can find articles in the newspaper about every two months showing shoreline that's been destroyed, not destroyed, but no longer natural on lakes. What they have said is that if a lake doesn't have 75% of its shoreline in a natural state, the waters will become impaired. It also says if the watershed, the water that flows toward the lake, if 75% of that watershed isn't in a natural state or some buffered state, the waters of the lake will become impaired. And a mantra of environmentalists is if you have a body of water that is clean or unimpaired, it's very inexpensive to keep it that way relative to trying to repair one that's already impaired. To repair something, to try to bring something back is very difficult. The last piece of information, and then I'll tell you what I've given the information for, there was a meeting about two years ago at the Water Conservation District, Washington County Meeting, and it was just a general discussion about all the surface water in Washington County. And I think they were talking mostly northern Washington County. So there was a map a minute ago showing, and you discussed two-acre wetlands and so and so. So the number given out was there's 3,200 wetlands, either in all of Washington County or just this northern part, plus the St. Kerr River, numerous lakes, and that's a lot of surface water. Then a hydrologist got up to speak and said, "All that surface water that we can see, there's 100 times that amount of water underneath us in the aquifers." And the hydrologist spoke and said, "There is a bill before the legislature," and it was several years ago, "which did pass, to provide money so they can determine how the aquifer gets recharged." Maybe it's plural aquifers. Because they didn't know. They knew that some of the wetlands were more important than others in terms of the water filtering back down to the aquifer. And he made a comment, he said, "God forbid someone should build a parking lot on the wrong wetland." So I bring that up just to say, I think the discussion from Sheri about protecting or understanding the wetlands in terms of development and possible contamination is extremely important. And you can get maps by now. I think the money was approved. I think the process is either done or is still in process to figure out basically how these aquifers are recharged. We don't want to run into, I think we mean, the whole nation doesn't want to see the aquifers ruined. Going back to the comment about natural shoreline and natural watershed, I've seen maps from Jim Shaver's group, the watershed district, and it shows the total wetland for Big Marine. And I'm sure there's another map for the wet, for the watershed for Bone Lake, et cetera. So you can look at a map and say, okay, the water that's east, no, the water that's east of County 4 flows to Big Marine. I know that, I remember that from the map. The water that's west of County, I said County 4, excuse me. The west of Manning Trail or County 15 goes away from Big Marine, east of Manning Trail goes towards Big Marine. So wherever the whole watershed district is, I would think that should play into the standard. Because if you're going to develop some plot somewhere that happens to be on the watershed that goes towards Big Marine or towards Bone, you should know that. And that can dictate something. Again, I don't know enough about the details of the standard, but that's information that could help. Right now, Big Marine Lake probably has about 75% of its shoreline in a natural or well buffered state. So going back to what Tony just said, if these big properties that are left get developed in a manner that's not environmentally sensitive, that's not going to be good for the lake. Same thing for the watershed. If those big farm, the big farm of 100 and some acres, if a lot of that is developed, again, it's not, it may not, there's probably a way to develop it both for property value as well as environmentally sensitive. But putting five units up, whatever the number would be, wouldn't be my recommendation. And finally, and maybe it was already addressed, there's a lot of small lots. Hopefully, there would be a way to redevelop them, assuming people want to redevelop them, and still have adequate lake setback or some. What I want to avoid, what I hopefully want to avoid, is having a lot the size of this table and have a big mansion on it. Go to Minnetaka. It's amazing there's any fish in Minnetaka, I don't know how it happens, because there's so many houses taking up so much space. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll close the public discussion and open it up to the commission. So I think we should go kind of item by item on the big decision-maker things, items that Sheri talked about. So the first one being the size of the water bodies that this shoreline ordinance would regulate, as identified by this colorful map.
Very helpful map.
Very helpful, yeah, yeah.
I think it really does help us to visualize what we're looking at.
If we changed that to look at everything at two and a half acres or larger, what kind of staff work is that? I mean, what, that's...
Well, you're really, you know, what you're really looking at are public waters. And I mean, that's, they're all, the waters that are outlined in here are the ones that the state has defined as public waters. You know, and they have public waters that are lakes and public waters that are wetlands.
What does that say? By model, covered by model ordinance, okay.
Right. So on the map, just for interpretation, that if you went strictly by the model ordinance, it says we must regulate 10 acres or more.
Okay.
Those would be the ones that are in yellow.
Okay.
The ones that are in our current ordinance are some of those that are in yellow, but then also in the, you know, blue, whatever you want to call that color. And then there are other public waters that, some of which are probably greater than two and a half, or two and a half acres, those are the ones that are in the violet color. Those are not covered by our current ordinance.
But could be.
If we were to identify.
Totally up to you, yeah. I mean, you know, there's a minimum standard. The minimum is 10 acres or more.
Yeah, is yellow.
Yellow. Then we have some of those that are in the state minimum that aren't in our current ordinance.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, at one extreme, I think there's an argument that could be made that the whole point of having a shoreline ordinance is to protect those waters. And officially, given some of the comments that were just made here, I think we can do the most protection by including the most area, all of those areas that are outlined here. I think, I think...
The two-and-a-half acre wetlands as well, you're saying?
As well.
Some of the, well, I mean, one of the things, talking about, somebody mentioned maps that indicate important wetlands.
Now, some of that was indicated in our discussion on the comp plan.
Yeah, and that map is in the comp plan. I don't know if it's the most updated map that was mentioned, but it is a fairly up-to-date map as far as we know. And there were some small wetlands that were indicated in there as important regeneration, for regeneration of the aquifer.
Well, I know the one on our property is not listed here, and that one is critical to the, it is the, oh, my brain's not working. The, one of the sources to the, to the Comfort Lake.
Okay.
It flows up to Bone.
Right, which that's not included in this, but...
And I'm just saying that, so there are areas smaller than this that are critical.
Right.
And so I don't think it's overreaching to include all of these.
Would you? I would too.
I don't, I'm not sure yet. Do we want a wetland management ordinance or do we want a shoreline management ordinance?
All of the above.
Aren't wetlands already part of the shoreline ordinance?
What?
Yeah, they are.
No, not necessarily. That's why I'm saying the model ordinance says lakes 10 acres or greater.
Okay.
Right now, we're really inconsistent.
Yeah.
Because we have most of the lakes 10 acres or greater and some of the wetlands.
I don't know. For my money, and where I hope our comp plan will end up going, I would like to see Scandia be a model ordinance, the whole city. And I would like to see us setting the standard for high water quality and for protecting our waters. And I know that's going to be difficult to encourage, you know, obviously, we want to encourage building and growth, and those are things that are also important. But I don't think that we want to do that at the expense of saving this water. I mean, you know, somebody's going to make, you know, you know, a million bucks building a house today, but everybody else is going to spend 10 million in 20 years to try and fix the aquifer. You know what I mean? So I think it's, I think it's important to maximize the water protection as much as we can. That's my philosophy.
With the information we have today that 10 years ago would have been absurd, I mean, we understand aquifer flows.
Right.
And what these wetlands are doing, which ones are sensitive. We've got a ton of great information that if we apply into this, which we are, I mean, that would be, I think, a really good thing for the future.
Yeah.
Well, in survey after survey, people in the area say this is what they value the most, is the clean water, the quality of the environment we keep here.
Good point.
Activities on the water, this is the most important thing. I mean, I know the first survey we did back in 2005 that I was aware of, this, and it's been consistent since then, this is what people in the area want. So I don't think we are saying anything that isn't widely accepted.
Right. And Big Marine Lake, I mean, let's not screw it up.
Yeah.
You know, it's a beautiful lake.
Right.
Well, it is.
That should be our tagline, "Don't screw it up."
I'm okay with that.
I thought that was part of our job description, "Don't screw it up."
I'll be the redneck here.
I'm still concerned about how far-reaching it is if we take every wetland that's two-and-a-half acres or greater. And I don't know what the ramifications of that are. Are there same standards? I mean, there's different setbacks from wetlands than there are from lakes, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Or are they the same?
Neil, do you know?
Off the top of the head, well, let's see what the setbacks are. Well, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't decided on the wetland setbacks yet.
Okay, we haven't done it yet.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out whether these conditions of the ordinance then apply equally to lakes or wetlands, or even should they?
Well, here's the thing, is...
If we include them all.
Yeah, okay, so it seems like, well, it's just a wetland, but sometimes the wetlands are more important than the lakes, as far as like, things like regenerating the aquifer and those kind of things. So even though it looks inconsequential, and I realize, you know, so even though it looks inconsequential, it might be more important. I mean, we all cherish Big Marine Lake, but it doesn't even regenerate the aquifers. There's other wetlands that do, and that one doesn't. So, you know, I mean, I'm not saying...
That's a pretty complex study, I'll tell you.
Well, yeah, but according to that map that we have, that we looked at last month, Big Marine does not regenerate the aquifers. And I'm not saying we should, like, I mean, obviously, it's super important, but there's other wetlands that regenerate aquifers. We're talking, you know, groundwater that's, I mean, you screw up the groundwater, talk about, "Don't screw it up." That's impossible to fix.
On the other hand, we have, we're doing these regulations, and it appears to me in the brief amount of time I've been on the committee, that undeveloped land is treated this way. Developed land, which is substandard and in many, many ways, is treated entirely differently. Are we going to do anything to try to rectify those non-conforming properties?
Love to, but we can't. I mean, we can't, and property owners have rights, so we can't...
Yes, they do.
Right.
Property owners have rights.
Yeah, yeah.
That means the ones that owns the vacant land and also the ones that own ones occupied.
Yeah, absolutely. But, but just because mistakes were made in the past, I mean, I mean, obviously, it doesn't mean we should not try and prevent mistakes for the future. And obviously, we need to, I mean, we are trying to rectify. Part of our, part of our existing ordinance is that if somebody asks for a variance on one of those small lots and they own two, they have to combine them. So that's...
If they own two, yes.
If they, you know, if they can, they have to. And so, yeah, so we're trying to rectify that as best as we can. I mean, you know...
I question if we're going far enough, if we go far enough to rectify. That's the way I'm questioning, I guess.
Well, we're not dealing with everything tonight. We're dealing with just shoreline tonight.
Yeah.
Boy, if that's shoreline, if you have, I'll tell you, most of those small lots on Big Marine are next to wetlands.
Yeah, well...
Just about every one of them.
That's true.
And so I'm saying, well, I, you know, let's be careful here. I don't, I don't know.
Well, they, those lots have to comply with the existing regulations unless they get a variance.
Yes.
Right? So they're not being dealt with unfairly or anything, but that's not really what you're asking. You're saying that we're not fixing them.
No, we're not.
But we have no way to fix them. The only way to fix those lots is to tear down all the houses, and that's not going to happen.
No.
So, I mean, how would you, what would be, how would you go about fixing that? And is that even the discussion? Well, but that's not even, and that's not even the discussion, you know? I mean, is it? That's not the discussion we're facing now.
Can I throw something in?
Sure.
You did, there was some fixing done with new septic systems X years ago.
Sure.
As an example.
Sure, yeah. And, and the, you know, the hopefully upcoming repair of that, that Bliss system someday.
She would have been quite a bit already, but, you know, there will be one.
Yeah, so...
That's a big part of it, cleaning up the septics.
So, yeah, we're trying.
There is some project coming there.
Yeah, yeah. So, 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 all that being said, yes, I agree with you, we need to try and fix those. And we, as far as I'm concerned, I would say, let's do it as much as we can, but that's not really the discussion in front of us.
Right.
The discussion in front of us is, what should we regulate? You know, should we let it go on the, on the little stuff and just pay attention to the big stuff? My argument is the little stuff is just as important.
We're still regulating the small stuff, are we not?
Um...
I mean, we have ordinance all over the place about wetlands.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, just look at the driveway tonight.
Yeah, that's true.
That's, that's our very teeny wetland, probably a category 30.
So the question is, do we include that in the shoreline management ordinance, or do we keep it at 10 acres and then have other ordinance to deal with the wetlands?
So we have, so we have setback regulations, but then in the shoreline, and correct me if I'm wrong, Neil...
I mean, this, a lot of this, you know, it's that whole jurisdiction, because in this, in this ordinance, you know, you would have, if you said, "Let's do it to the max, okay?" Doing it to the max would sit there and say, "All, you know, all public waters is defined by the state of Minnesota are within our shoreline zoning district." And then the other addition to that would be any, you know, non-classified body of waters, there's a terminology that would apply to all wetlands within the city.
Okay.
And, you know, you know, one of the things, because Sheri and I have had this discussion where the thing that may apply to all wetlands are maybe just, just the wetland setback section of this ordinance.
Okay.
So that's one way to cover both of them, where anything that is on a public water, the whole ordinance applies to, but the isolated wetlands, the wetland setbacks apply too.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something, I don't know what else we could add to that.
But when you're talking about the isolated wetlands, you're not talking about the stuff that's highlighted in pink.
I'm talking about the one by Jan's house. That's an isolated wetland.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Because it's not on this map.
Right, so that would not be covered. So if we say that we want this to include yellow, blue, and pink as designated by this map, we're not saying that all of those wetlands, those isolated wetlands are included in the shoreline ordinance. We're saying...
If you said, "Everything, all those colors are included," the wetland by Jan's is not included.
Isn't, still not included, but would be covered.
That would have to be added to the definition of jurisdiction.
Okay, oh, so we'd still have to add that, okay. So, but currently, we regulate those.
But it's, well, it's still protected by setbacks, right? I mean, isn't it, I mean, we can't just, I couldn't just put in a new driveway right through our wetland.
No, every wetland's covered by setback.
Right.
No matter what size.
Sheri? Sheri?
Yeah, it's the difference, it's the difference between public waters and, and the things that are on, all the things that are on the map in preview are public waters. But there are many wetlands in your city that are not public waters. Um, but there are many wetlands in your city that are not public waters. So I, I have a sense of where you're going, is that you're thinking, include everything that's a public water in the shoreline ordinance, and identify a shoreline area around each of those public waters. And then the requirements of the shoreline ordinance would apply to those. But only the wetland setback requirements would apply to those wetlands that are not public waters. Is that kinda where you're going?
That's kinda where I'm going, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it.
I think, I think that's what we were looking for, Sherry.
So...
One, and one of the things I think about that, that's actually maybe a plus from a governance standpoint, is if you look at those, those, um, wetlands that are public waters that are outlined in the pink, many of those are very similar in size to some of the ones that are already being regulated and included in your ordinance. And so it's sort of inequitable that wetlands like number eighty-two
These are covered, but these are not.
are in, but the ones just south of it...
Like this one.
Or is it sixty-one? I can't, it's small for me. So it's sixty-one, which is right below ninety-seven, is in your ordinance now, but a wetland that is straight south of it and is the same size or even a little larger is not.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense, yeah.
So that's, I mean, if it was all that they were really small, the pink ones, then I'd say, well, someone just made a decision based on size. But when I look at this, some of those ones that we're not regulating now, the pink ones, are, are just as big and have a similar landscape situation to the ones you are regulating now.
Yeah, that one's connected to Big Marine right there.
Yeah.
Or is it that one?
I'm not sure which one that is.
Is that a point one way or another?
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's, that's where I'm leaning. Um, the, yeah, that makes the most sense to me. And we're not talking about regulating every single wetland with a shoreline ordinance requirement, which would be pretty hard, yes.
But the ones that would be public waters.
I suspect that's, Tom, is that what your concern was?
Well, I just, I just think this, this is a shoreline management ordinance, and it's for public waters. And to me, that ought to be ten acres or more, and deal with wetlands in some other ordinance.
But there's a lot of bodies of water here that are less than ten acres that are bodies of water, and they are public, they're public waters. So we're, we're not talking, as Sherry said, we're not talking about every wetland in Scandia.
And I don't think you can determine the importance of something by its size.
I'm just trying to get my hands around the shoreline management ordinance and what we are managing. What are we managing with it? And I'm saying, it's a lot easier to say it's ten acres, it's public waters, it is ten acres or larger, period. That ordinance deals with this. If you wanna deal with wetlands, then put it in a different ordinance.
Wetlands slash lakes and ponds that are smaller than ten acres.
Yes, yes.
But why would you, why wouldn't you just regulate it all under the same ordinance?
Because it's so huge.
Well, but if they're all...
And complex.
Okay, okay, but, but...
So the whole city would be shoreline if we regulated every wetland under the, as shoreline.
Right, but we're not talking about every, every wetland.
Every wetland, we're talking about just the larger, just the stuff that's identified as public waters on here.
Right, yeah, I mean, that seems...
I mean, it...
Like a, a way to go.
I, I, I know what you're saying, Tom, and I agree with you, but I also agree with Dan.
I, I think this...
And Jan, so I don't know how we encompass this. Is it acre size, is it...
But I don't think we are expert enough to say anything under ten, or even if you made it smaller, anything under five acres is gonna be okay to build, you know?
I don't, I don't either. I don't, no, I don't think we're expert at all at that. And what I'm just saying is that ten acres, this ordinance applies.
But then you have to have a whole separate ordinance. Why would, why wouldn't you just use the same ordinance? Because we're already saying that this doesn't apply to the non-public bodies of water, i.e. Jan's, uh, Jan's wetland.
Headwaters, that's the...
Well, you know, we have to identify those in, right?
Well, they're already identified in the wetland identification thing.
The comp plan app has, has most of those identified. But, but we're not talking about all those individual wetlands. We're just talking about public waters.
Right. So if, and, you know, public waters, this was designed for public waters. If you wanna get deeper, you know, what you would then do is sit there and either, as, you know, Tom had suggested, write a separate ordinance to deal with wetlands, or Sherry and I have had the conversation about, is just reference that in here under the section, you know, jurisdiction. Where does this apply? That only this one section, you know, six point four B, applies to wetlands that are not public waters.
And what about, just throwing this little idea out there, what about finding that map that was mentioned earlier that identifies important water, you know, aquifer, aquifer refreshers, or whatever those important scientifically sensitive waters are? And I'm not talking about just the big lakes, I'm talking about the, you know, whatever the, the, um, wetlands are that refresh the aquifers, and, and possibly putting in an additional protection for those.
I, see, that's, that's the line I was thinking on that. If, it seems like the trend is gonna be to really understand our waters underground and above ground. And if there's a sensitive wetland that's important, maybe it's three acres, we need to protect that.
This sounds like an action step for the comp plan.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, yeah, I mean, it seems to be the trend, I'm sure, for a lot of communities, because we're obtaining so much more information than we had even five years ago.
Right.
I mean, to understand the flow of an aquifer and what's replenishing it, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
And if we wanna be progressive in that, then it's an action item.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I would say is...
We're kinda talking about a couple of different things here.
Yeah, a couple of different things here. I would say, my, my recommendation, and I think maybe we should call it to a, to a vote here, um, is to regulate all the public waters identified on this particular map. So encompassing everything with the shoreline ordinance. Uh, and then the wetlands that are, the normal wetlands that are in the city should be just covered by the wetland section, setback section. And going forward, we should make an action step in the comp plan to identify specifically scientifically important bodies of water for further, for possible further protection if needed.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that, too.
Sherry?
Yeah, that sounds fine to me.
Is there, is there a trend? I'm sure there is a trend, but are a lot of communities considering these same things today?
Yes, and even, um, father and the watershed organizations, in their wetland requirements and buffer requirements, I think are requiring wider buffers around recharge, wetlands that are important recharge, or, um, streams that are important recharge. Um, yes, it is a trend. Um, and, and I think the next trend will be looking even a little more closely at the land uses around those recharge wetlands. Um, but for now, I think they get, some of them get wider buffers, um, if they're recharged. But you're right, that is the trend, and so I think it would be very fair for you to do what you're talking about here, to include, um, shoreline regulations around all the public waters in Scandia, to, um, require just that section on setbacks for wetlands that are both public waters and not public waters. And then to include a goal in your comp plan to look, maybe with the watershed district, at the wetlands that are aquifer recharge water bodies, and whether there should be some additional regulation around those. Did I, did I catch what you said?
That's, that's, that's where I was going, yeah.
I, I think rather than being complex, I think that actually is simplified. I mean, I think that is a simple way of looking at it, rather than determining something by size.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, all wetlands.
Yeah, I think it just makes it simpler.
Can you get on board with that, Tom, or, well, we can vote. Okay, let's have a little voice vote on this particular section, the water body size. All those in favor of going the, the, to the full extent on here and counting all public waters? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna go with that, we're gonna go with that. All right, so let's move on.
Just a quick note, just kinda to wrap this up, even though you're taking action. What's up there on the board is a map that you looked at last week, or last meeting from the comp plan. This might have been what you were referring to. The wet, the areas that are in kind of the, the, I'll call it green for lack of a better word, those are the areas, both the lakes and wetlands that recharge the aquifers.
The, the, like, army green one, not the, yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, not aquifer, whatever.
The pea soup green.
Yeah, pea soup.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
It's sort of the calf scour yellow, actually.
Yeah. But I mean, and, you know, some of those are, you know, in protected waters, but then there are areas where they are, where there are differences.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing, I know if we ever get to it tonight, in terms of the implementation plans for the comp plan underwater resources, uh, number three under protect and, or protect, preserve and protect quality, quantity and quality of surface water and groundwater. Item three is identify sensitive water areas to require protective practices in these areas.
Yeah.
So I think...
So it's kind of already, it's already an action.
We're on that track.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, so now we need to look at the standards for the lot sizes on the water bodies, and whether or not we should keep current, go with, uh, the recommended, or not recommended, but the, uh, the model ordinance, or, uh, some combination thereof.
I was, uh, wondering about the impact that a smaller lot size has on then the PUDs, and how could we could get twenty acres allowing eighty-eight units? I didn't know how that could...
Well, well, one of the things in there is that ordinance is based upon a much smaller, so if you go to, I'm probably on the wrong page, I know I'm on the wrong book, maybe not. If you take that PUD example, they are using the, uh, the DNR, uh, model ordinance lot sizes for areas that are on a public sewer system.
Oh, okay.
So small lots. Now, you know, that was based upon fifteen and twenty thousand square foot lots, where, you know, our ordinance now is two and a half acres.
Right.
So that would affect that calculation.
Yeah, so that would dramatically lower, because what we would do is we would take that two and a half acres as our base, and then if they decide, if somebody decided to develop a PUD, then we could say, well, you could have that two and a half acres, and then you can, you can add extras for doing the PUD, but it's not gonna end up...
Right, so when they're going through their tier analysis, they were using, you know, fifteen and twenty thousand square foot lots,
Yeah.
where, you know, our current standard is two and a half acres, call it, you know, for rounding purposes, call it a hundred, 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 ten thousand.
Yeah, okay.
So that...
So we would never get anywhere near that.
That eighty-eight on twenty acres in Scandia is probably more like, you know...
Like a quarter of that.
Less than a quarter.
Less than a quarter, less than a quarter, yeah.
Like an eighth, like ten.
Yeah, okay.
So just, to put that in perspective, you know, you still...
Was Tegavo on the old ordinance, this part, in San Diego?
I think so, yeah.
Tegavo was a open space subdivision, it was not a PUD.
Right, it was a, what you call a cluster, I guess, or...
Conservation subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's kinda what we're looking at, something like that.
What if we were to go into forty thousand square feet as a lot size as opposed to two and a half acres? How does that affect this PUD thing?
Well, that's gonna, that's gonna dramatically raise the number of houses on a PUD, for sure. Because if now, if right now, we've got, say, for instance, you said a hundred and ten thousand, or whatever it is, you're gonna cut that by less than half of that. So you, so, so if it's ten, it would be more than twenty. If the calculations end up being ten, it would be more than twenty.
What, what's the acreage of forty thousand square feet?
Well, we...
Less than one.
Yeah.
It's about one acre.
Yeah, yeah, what is it, forty, forty? Forty, forty-three.
The model ordinance that the state has is forty thousand square feet.
Yeah. What's that?
The ordinance that the state model is, is forty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Not two and a half acres.
Right.
And so I was asking...
Yeah, ours, our current is two and a half.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what I was asking, what is the impact if we were forty thousand square, what would that?
Pretty dramatic.
I don't know, but, you know, you're still forty thousand is an acre.
Yeah.
And you got all these setback required with the PUD, and you got public, or you got dedicated properties in front you can't touch, or all that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can get much density there.
But if you're talking a twenty acre parcel, um, and you're only setting aside, you know, you gotta, if you're taking forty, I mean, I don't know what all that adds up to being, but you're gonna use up a lot of that twenty, a lot more of that twenty acres. Um, and as we heard earlier, the, um, you know, if we're trying to preserve the natural space, because it's not just the, you know, space, it's also trying to preserve the natural space around the lake itself. So the more you increase, obviously, the more you increase, the, the, uh, the number of units, the more impact you're gonna have on that natural space around the lake. Um, you know, I, I think, personally, I think that on a two and a half acre basis, if you're doing something like a PUD, you can get some bonuses. And I think we should add in some extra bonus, and that's one of the items also on our comp plan action item, is to take a look at adding some extra bonuses for PUDs. Uh, but still maintaining the two and a half acre lot size. Um, I think that's an option, you know, so that you have a lower, lower the impact.
I guess where I'm coming from, the whole thing is that, I think it's a huge waste of land to have someone develop property when they use an acre or less for their home site and whatever. And then you got all the rest, two acres, or one and a half acres or more that they don't wanna maintain. Nobody wants to maintain. We gotta be able to use our land better than that.
Well, it is being used, it's being used by nature.
Okay, nature's doing it, okay.
The deer.
All right.
And, 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 you know, I mean, you've got, that gives pervious surface for the rain to drain into. There's a lot of benefits to having open space, and that, keep in mind, keep in mind, that was the number one thing, or one of the number one things on the, on all the surveys, is maintaining open space. And, you know, so I, I think you can go, I mean, I'm, I, I think I'm, I'm all in favor of encouraging developments with the use of PUDs, but I think we need to consider what's important to Scandia and the people of Scandia, and what's important to, you know, for the environment.
And what helps to maintain the value of that land that they have.
I just, I just wanna use the land to its best ability. And for instance, doesn't necessarily apply to shoreline, maybe, maybe, maybe not. When I'm looking at cluster development, if somebody's got twenty acres, can, why not build, um, say, twenty, or not twenty, say, put five homes on there, six homes, and put them on small lots, have everything else open?
Yeah, that's what a PUD would do.
Yes, that's what a PUD does, but not individual lots. You got the same kinda thing.
What do you mean, not individual lots? PUDs would be on individual lots.
If you got two and a half acres, it doesn't apply to that. I don't think it applies to a five acre parcel.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I don't think, PUDs, you can get a PUD on a...
There is a density bonus, depending upon how close you are, you know, and that's the whole tier analysis that, you know, that, that they go through. I think one of the things when you're, if you jumped over to PUDs, and granted, you know, that's another section... that if you look at the calculation that's up on the screen, you know, one of the things, out of total area, in making your calculation density, wetlands and other places that are not suitable are taken out of that.
They don't count.
They don't count.
Yeah.
In making that calculation, so I think that's one thing that's important to, to consider.
They, they don't count as part of the open land.
They don't count in the calculation of density.
Okay.
So, if you had a 40 acre parcel that had 20 acre wetland, in calculating your allowable density, you're calculating it as though you only have 20 acres.
Yeah.
So, in essence, you know, it takes those protected areas and already takes them off the table.
Sure, okay.
I've got a question. You guys are talking about property on Big Marine Lake that has a public sewer.
No, we're not.
As being qualified to have smaller lots, right?
No, that's not what we're talking about right now.
Shared sewer?
We're talking about potentially a shared sewer, possibly.
Well, there's, there's, the Bliss has shared sewer.
Yeah, we're not talking about the Bliss addition right now, though. We're talking about undeveloped land.
Well, even undeveloped land, when they count that unusable area, they don't count the wetlands. They should also not count the septic sites that's shared, or the backup septic site that may be used in the future that's shared.
Well, they have to count that because the septics have to be on, they can't be in wetland space, they have to be on usable space, so they have to count that.
Why? Because that gets.
That's part of, that's part of what's required for a site, is, is, I mean, you can't have a house without a septic. So, so you have to, you have to include the septic as part of your site size. So, if you need a septic and a backup septic, then you have to include that. You couldn't, you couldn't.
The PUDs, they don't, right?
Uh, as far as.
With Tagavo, they didn't make any allowances for where the septic site is, and they didn't require any backup site whatsoever, which they allow on a two and a half, which they demand on a two and a half acre site.
Well, it's because Tagavo has a community septic system, just like the Bliss.
Right, but that community septic system should not be counted in the, the open space land, because it is not good land, because it is a sewer hole.
So, it is, it is allowed in the open space ordinance to place the septic system in, in that open space.
Right, but you should be allotting that as being a wetland, because it's a treatment area for, for sewage.
It doesn't fit the state definition of a wetland.
No, but it is a sewage treatment facility.
I, I understand what you're saying. You're saying it should be taken out of the calculation.
Right.
So, so you're saying it should be taken out, so they take, so if you have a 20 acre parcel, you have, or a 10, a 40 acre parcel, 20 acres of wetland, you take the 20 acres out, and then you're saying, but we also need five acres for, for septic, say, for instance, so you take that out, so now you have 25 unusable acres, and you have to.
Five more you should for the backup septic, because when you have a two and a half acre lot on the lake, when you wanna build a house on it, you've got the two and a half acres, and you're gonna have to have a septic site and a backup septic.
So, you're suggesting, so you're suggesting that the, that the density, that the allowed density calculations is based on just what's left in this mythical scenario we're talking about, would be only 10 acres left.
We have to give more importance to sewage treatment. Scandia has no public sewage treatment facilities. They've got this site over here, they've got this little site over here, and you get one neighbor in there who's gonna do some wicked thing and, and contaminate that site, then they have to build on another site and let that other site go back to nature, maybe, hopefully. And nobody's treating that sewage, it's just going up to this 10 acre lot that's in a farmer's field now, that eventually might have houses all around it. I mean, you know, I wish people would look at septic sites, those big things with the ter, termites, as cemeteries. Boy, let me tell you, there wouldn't be as many of them being put in, because nobody wants that facility in their backyard, you know? And Scandia, you know, we could have, we could have had sewer run down Alinda 30 years ago. And oh heavens, no, we were a bedroom community, we were gonna stay quiet.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Thank you very much, I, I, I appreciate your, your comments. So, back to the, to the question in hand, is whether or not we should increase lot sizes, decrease lot sizes, or keep them the same? What are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm resistant to going smaller, just.
That's probably where I would lean.
And it's working.
It's currently working.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tom, what do you think?
That's where I would go to. I haven't seen a two and a half acre lot developed on Big Marine in the last, how many years?
Oh, well.
Haven't seen one.
Well, it's just old, so we'll see.
So, I haven't seen one.
Yeah. Well, but, but.
But houses are getting built on the smaller lots anyhow, they just come for a variance.
Yes, so they're getting built on a smaller lot that's less, less desirable than two and a half acre lot you're talking about. That's that thing, well.
Well, we're doing what we can about that.
The main thing this would affect is those areas that are still developable, you know, by, by state law. We have to allow people to develop those existing legal non-conforming lots, if they can do so, what, you know, if they can put a septic system on them and, and meet the setback requirement. So, we're not gonna change the parts of the lake that have already been divided in the past with this very much. The only thing we'd affect if, if we went down to a, you know, a 40,000 square foot lot size would be that some people who own a few lots might not have to combine them as they have in the past. But for the, for the large, you know, for the biggest issue here, the issue of lot size is an issue for those few big remaining parcels around the lake, and how densely you're gonna allow them to develop.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm pretty against going smaller, also.
And so, the question becomes, do you let, do you have the same requirements for them in terms of minimum lot size that you do in the rest of the general rural district? Or, do you allow them to go down to a smaller size because the DNR has permitted that in lake shore areas in rural states?
Yeah, no, and, and I don't think so. Um, alright, uh, I think, I think the general consensus, at least the majority consensus, is to, to maintain the current, current standard and not, not reduce.
Before, can I ask a question before you vote?
Uh, we're not actually voting. I mean, we can vote, we could take a voice vote, but.
Well, my, my question has to do with, I think Tom mentioned with cluster housing.
Uh-huh.
Let's say the farm has 100 acres, would it make sense to, instead of breaking up this 100 acres, two and a half lots, two and a half acre bunch of lots, put them like Tagavo, or what's the one, Jackson Meadows?
Uh-huh.
So, you've got a lot of open land, instead of.
Yeah, and that's why.
Well, I think Tom's. The acre here with a little brush around it.
Yeah, and that's why we're encouraging these PUDs. So, what, what we wanna do is we want to, rather than lead with a stick, we wanna lead with a, with an incentive.
So, the incentive would be to make it cluster?
Would be to make a cluster, and so, say, for instance, you had a 20 acre, or say it was a 10 acre lot, not that that would happen. So, instead of dividing that up into, you know, four, two and a half acre lots, let's say you could do five houses, but they would all be in one little spot, leaving the rest open, so you save all that open space. So, so there is actually more houses, but more open space as well. So, that's the idea, and it's kind of a carrot rather than a stick idea. So, and that's where we're going with the PUD thought process as well, so.
I think the other thing to remember that is that, for, if you look at the 100 acres, only 1,000 feet from the edge of the lake this ordinance applies to.
Right.
So, I mean, you've got 1,000 foot swatch around there, that's, you know, that's in that zoning district, you know, that's what it would apply to. So, I mean, it, it's tough to see now, but if you look the, at the larger map up there, where you see there's kind of a, you know, dotted section, or you see around the lakes, it borders a lot of the lakes, you know, that's where this ordinance would apply.
Which we'll expand a little bit based on our new.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, right.
As far as the existing lots, you know, the, the small lots and the whole issue of combining, is it possible, wise, to have a different definition of minimum size there? So, variances aren't required for every single thing, or is that desirable, is that what you want to have? Every single change that happens for all of those, whether it's combined or individually, there before you?
Well, it, now, and this is just me speaking from my personal opinion, I would say that having a different, that, that I would prefer to have those under the same standard, and to try at every possibility to bring them into compliance, because the standard that those were built in is, in my opinion, substandard and not good enough. And while those people obviously deserve the right to enjoy their property, peaceful enjoyment of their property, um, we also still, again, in my opinion, wanna maintain water quality and preserve what we have, and not screw it up. So, so, at every opportunity, if we can take those opportunities to fix some of the problems of the past, I think we should take them. Um, and that's my personal opinion, and that's currently how the ordinance is.
All those properties, cause many of them will never get to two and a half acres.
None of them will, yeah.
So, they're all non-compliant there.
Right.
So, every change, no matter what it is.
Right.
They have to come before a variance. Many, most of those, many of those would be improvements to their, to their whole, to the whole situation.
Yeah.
But everything requires a variance.
More or less, and, and that's, and that's one of the protections that we have, because if we, if we, if we change the rules on those lots, then you're gonna say, well, okay, so now those people can start building these larger, a little bit larger houses, they don't need to worry so much about impervious surface. But those lots are so sensitive already, that we can't just allow them, I mean, again, my personal opinion, we can't just allow them to go, say, go beyond the impervious surface willy-nilly, because we're, we're just making a, a bad problem worse, and I think we should try and make a bad problem better, if we can. I realize it's a hassle for the homeowners, but that's just part of the deal, when you live in the Bliss addition.
There are provisions, though, for, uh, building on smaller lots without a variance. But, you know, those lots, that's what I was looking here, had to be created before January 1, 70, 73. Also have to be 60% of the size of this, of the slot, so you could go down to one and a half acres. Uh, but they also need to meet all the setbacks, and be demonstrated that you can have two, uh, safe and adequate sewer treatment systems on that property. So, if you had an acre and a half, or 1.6 acres there, you could build on that without a variance, presuming you could meet those other standards.
Okay, so, Sherry, did, did you kind of get that, the standards for the lot sizes, we're gonna, we, I think we're gonna keep them the same? Based on.
They are the same?
Yeah, so the two, keep, keep it with the two and a half acres based on consensus, majority consensus. Alright, so, now, moving on to the next big question in front of us, which is PUDs? And whether or not to allow them in the shoreline ordinance? Anybody thoughts? My personal opinion of PUDs, if I can start, is I think they're a good idea, because they're kind of a low-impact combination of maintaining open space while also encouraging development. And encouraging community septics, and, you know, which is already one of the items that we are gonna consider in the comp plan. But, you know, adding more incentive to do the PUDs, I think, I think it's just a win-win for everybody, in my opinion.
I, I agree, I don't have anything to add to that, which is why I'm not saying much.
I do, too.
Okay.
Even Tom, even Tom thinks it's a good idea.
I got you on one, finally.
You're just tiring them out, I think.
Wearing them down.
Well, they're not, they're not opposed to what I was saying.
No, not at all.
I like to have clustered areas with open space that can still be utilized. Maybe this open space would be, say, alright, uh, it's gonna be open space, but say, well, maybe somebody wants to farm it.
I'm.
Somehow let it be used.
Yeah, I'm for that. Pasture or farm.
Instead of just being two and a half acres, where a guy takes care of one and the other part is, you know.
Totally on board with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally on board. Okay, Sherry, did you hear that?
Yep, so, PUDs are gonna stay in.
PUD, PUDs are in, yeah.
PUDs are in.
Okay, was there anything else we needed to cover specifically on the shoreline ordinance?
And then are, are you willing to go with Neil's idea regarding the grading and filling sections? That we lower the thresholds within shoreline areas from what they are in other areas to require permits for, you know, smaller areas of disturbance than we do in other areas? And I think part of Neil's recommendation about this is based on some sites he's seen, where partly because of the, the smaller lot sizes, grading and filling a smaller area has more potential to impact neighbors or public roadways than it does on some of the larger lots in Scandia.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm totally on board, I'm totally on board with lowering those standards. So, basically, we're making it a little bit more strict for people to, on a shoreline, to have to get a permit.
Yeah.
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 Sounds, sounds like a good idea.
I think that was, that was most of it, so do you feel like you're kind of, kind of ready to either look at a final version of this next time, or ready at this point to send it along to the council?
Oh, uh, what do you guys think? Send it to the council, or look at another, look at it one more time with the final? I feel like if we look at it with the final, we're just gonna be rehashing it again.
We, I thought we had a pretty good discussion tonight and previously.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, was, Sherry, was there gonna be talk about whether to, uh, change the 100 foot setback or not, or?
Oh, on the, on the wetlands.
Oh, I thought they had already decided they wanted to leave the setbacks, did you not?
The wetland setbacks?
No, no, from the lake, lake.
Oh.
The lake setback.
Well, I don't think we wanna make it less.
So, I didn't, I should mention it, so I just brought it up, so.
Yeah, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought they had already decided to maintain all of those as they are in the ordinance.
I, that, that's what I was thinking, maintain or.
I, I don't think we actually discussed it, but yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
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 Alright, so what do you think? Do you wanna see it one more time, or do you wanna send it on to the council?
I'd say send it.
Send it.
Send it.
Send it. Okay, I think our consensus is send it, so do we need a motion then? I think.
I move, we send it.
Uh, alright, so we have a motion to, and a second, to send the new shoreline ordinance as amended uh, to the city council, all those in, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. You did a very nice job of thinking through, this is a hard, a hard and detailed task, so I congratulate you.
Thank you.
Are we going to put this off because our, our, um, comp plan person is not here tonight?
No.
Are we still gonna spend some time on this one?
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Okay, should we do it tonight yet, 10 after 9?
You know, you know, one of the things, you know, we were working down here, it's been cleaned up a little bit since then, I mean, if we can get through these. And I mean, the key here, I think, is that these are a little bit broader without being specific, where, you know, you maybe, you know, look at tools instead of being prescriptive and saying, we're going to do this tool, this tool, because that seems to exclude things.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm not sure where we left off last time, but it.
We didn't go very far, yeah, we kinda ended.
So, are we on natural resources?
I think we're on natural resources.
Was there anything added to land use that we needed to add?
I had a comment on that, land use.
Sure, go ahead.
Again, it's the kind of the same general comment I have on a lot of it, is that if we're gonna, if we wanna reduce or have our density such and such, let's keep it densely the same, but allow home sites on smaller tracts of land, the whole. the same, but allow home sites on smaller tracts of land, the whole clustering thing again.
Yeah.
And have the remainder of the land that could be under, might even be under separate ownership, but it can't be developed or-
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Given, deeded to the city or something or farmed, yeah.
It's a nature area, whatever.
Yeah, I'm totally, I think that's super important, yeah.
And then, and then that would also allow the ability to have shared sewage treatment systems.
Yeah.
Where you don't have it spread out all over, where they would be, I think, most of our, would they be under a, like a condominium agreement or a, what am I trying to say?
Or a townhouse.
Homewards agreement.
Yeah, homeowners association.
Right, yeah, association, to take care of it.
Yeah.
By licensed maintenance.
So, so how, what would we do to add that as an action plan?
I think it's, it's in here, you're going to land use. We're saying review tools to allow for transfer development, like right cluster development and the like.
There you go.
I don't know if I like the language of the like, but I think the meaning's there. Go down a little further, identify infrastructure improvements, necessarily allow for smaller lots in village neighborhood districts, or we're saying we're going to concentrate those.
Yeah.
And then down, provide for greater density in knit village neighborhood districts to focus growth away from prime ag land.
Yeah.
I mean, those are three statements there. And then even below that, you know, potential tools to encourage preservation of prime ag land as part of the development.
Okay.
So I think, you know, a lot of those, well, I think what Tom was talking about are probably already in here.
Yeah.
And I think even in housing, you probably get that again. Anything else on land use, comments people have?
I don't have anything.
Natural resources?
All right, let's see.
I got the same comment. So we could have small lots with, you know, clustered so that we can have greater areas of natural resources.
So that would be under preserve high-quality natural areas. I mean, we could, we could add into preserve, into their, encourage cluster development? I mean, it's in here a couple of times, but certainly can add it again.
Well, I think the focus in the comp plan, though, is really to encourage development in targeted areas.
Okay.
Yes.
It's not in what's currently ag or general rural.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a thing you see repeated in here.
Yeah.
But if we have, our ordinance already say that you can have one per 10 acres or whatever it is, let's have a 40-acre tract and say, I want those four spots within five acres.
Yeah.
Not spread out in each corner.
We already have that in our constitution, yeah. Open space development.
Open space, it's, they, they'll give them bonuses, so you will have them on one acre, or actually it was two to four acre lots.
Mm-hmm.
And then the rest is kept as open space, four for 40. So it's not four 10s or anything like that. And then we've implemented that, but we've got a bunch of them in town here as a-
This open space, though, what's it, is it still under the ownership of the?
Of the, the housing development?
Yeah.
The, the association, yeah.
I'd like to see, go a step further and say, if this is ag land, I'd like to see that farmed.
Yeah.
Well, that would be up to the homeowners association to do it. I mean, you know, if they wanted to, they-
What, I mean, can't we somehow encourage that to happen? But one of the problems-
Instead of just grow up in weeds?
My neighbor did that, the Dietrich.
Yeah.
Development just south of me. And whatever kicked in at whatever date, I mean, the farmer got taxed out of continuing to farm that.
Cluster developments are very bad for, for ag land right next to them as far as tax implications.
Green Acres program. You gotta apply for green acres, done.
Yeah.
Problem solved.
Not that easy.
Yeah, that sounds too easy.
It really isn't. Having been there and been in denial repeatedly, I'm telling you that's-
Washington County's harder.
It's, it's, clusters are not good for the surrounding ag properties.
So that, that would eliminate that, Tom.
Just because the way it's taxed?
Well, but you can apply for, that's the whole point of the Green Acres program. You, as long as you meet the criteria, they cannot deny you.
Can a cluster meet that criteria?
No, it's not a cluster development, it's property that's-
Well, the open space.
The open space, if it's farmed, yeah. If it's bigger than 10 acres and it's farmed, it can be qualified. It has to be farmed by, depending on who owns it, it has to be farmed.
No, it's already in our development code. You only read, open space shall be part of, designated as part of the development. Minimum required open space shall be 55% of the gross acreage. Of this required open space, a minimum of 25% shall be in common ownership, accessible to and used for the benefit of owners of the lot within the development, unless the required open space will remain in agricultural use. So-
So it's already there?
Yeah, so it's, in essence, it's already there, that it says, you know, that 25% of it has to be in common ownership unless it's used for ag.
25% of it has to be, okay. Okay, in that way, that, that land can be owned by a farmer and be counted, so it can be owned by a separate entity, i.e. the farmer, and be counted as their open space.
Presumably, yeah.
Yeah. So, so if you had a 40-acre parcel, a developer could sell 30 of that to a farmer, count it as their open space and have it put-
Well, he would have to-
He would have to-
Get the open space subdivision approved.
Right, well, but, but, right, well, yeah, obviously there's details, but-
Doesn't that work?
I skip over the details.
Yeah, I didn't know that that was set up that way.
And if the farmer owns it, and in that case, if the farmer owns it and he farms it himself, green acres, done.
Yeah.
Taxes are lowered. Trust me, taxes-
All right, let's keep going, natural resources.
Let's not screw this up.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
I just, I just know we've not had that experience.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, put it in the-
I've heard Washington County's really hard. Okay, so preserve high-quality natural areas, provide educational materials, continue to maintain, preserve existing natural areas. Any other action items for preserve high-quality natural areas other than the cluster development, which is another good one? How else can we preserve that?
Have we identified them?
No.
Okay.
Identify.
Yeah.
Can we add that as an action item?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking it may be someplace else in here, I think we-
I'd be surprised if that wasn't addressed somewhere.
We do have, if you turn the page within that same section, write information on significant ecological areas. I mean, identify it, you know, say we're going to provide property owner's information on it.
Okay.
You know, identify it means, you know, are we going to do it or who's going to do it? I mean, are we, that could very well be a step to under preserve high-quality natural areas. You know, you know, create an inventory or, and do it with some other lead.
Okay.
That's easy to, you know, that's easy to do.
Sure. Okay, eliminate, reduce, or mitigate negative effects of invasive species on natural resources. We already have one that kind of ties into that above, that education. Right, oh, it's here again, in development maintenance plan for invasive species controlled city parks.
Those, those two sections really do sort of overlap.
Yeah, sure, yeah, a lot of these do.
One, we're looking at invasives, the other is just looking at high-quality natural areas that may not have invasive, so a lot of the steps are doing the same thing.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, but how do we get rid of them?
Fire.
Pull them out.
Fire.
I mean, this is, I'm talking about like buckthorn.
Pull it out.
We get education, but-
I can rent you my Highland cows, they eat buckthorn.
I mean, I've taken care of most of it on my property. My neighbor has it.
Yeah, so it just keeps coming back to your property, yeah. Uh, what about, what about, what about, like?
I'll bring Shrek and Fiona over.
Well, I mean, you know, the one thing in here, Tom, is, you know, we can't force a resident to do it, but if you look at number four there, develop maintenance plan for invasive species, control on city parks.
That's at least what the city can do.
Yeah.
Is there, is there, is there, what about, what about, like, exploring an idea for, like, incentivizing homeowners to, to get rid of invasive species? Like, if your property is buckthorn-free, you get a free month of property taxes or something, I don't know.
Well, what do they call it when you bring in?
Your neighbor pays.
Your neighbor pays.
Yeah, you bring in, you go for a fee and you get $2.50.
Yeah, there you, oh, there you go, so bring in, like, your buckthorn stems and you get-
No, we don't want to bring it in, but maybe, I don't know.
Have a burn party or something?
Give them a dollar stack.
Well, I would just think in that, under, under the education part, it would be nice to have a more concentrated citywide type awareness that people, this is a problem.
Awareness is the big thing.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm really against printing a bunch of stuff. I got something from Washington County on invasive species, and it was a book.
Yeah.
Like a five-
People are going to just go, go to sleep and put it aside.
It's too much info.
So if you're doing, I would agree with that. If you reterm that somehow, awareness, because providing educational is just a, you know, a means to get to awareness.
Yeah.
But if you're looking at a broader goal, it's really to, you know, increase the awareness of-
Figure out how to do that. So, so if we just say increase in awareness, then that gives us an action plan to figure out a way to do that. We don't need to figure out how to do that right now.
Yeah, even more, even more neighborhood-focused as opposed to, if you do it the whole-
Yeah.
City, brief in that, well, it'd apply to me, but if you get right down to neighborhoods.
Yeah. I've posted it on Nextdoor a couple of times.
Buckthorn heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying. All right, so-
Keep going, natural resources.
Okay, so eliminate, okay, so recognize and enhance publicly-owned lands and improve public access to such lands where appropriate. Prepare an inventory of public lands, including current conditions, uses, issues. Use CIP process to develop a five-year plan for, what's CIP?
Cut-off approval plan.
Oh, okay. Identify potential funding sources for grant opportunities, develop management plans for city-owned properties. What about something specifically about trying to get a hold of the lake shore that the Xavrells at the mine on?
That's parks, it's not natural resources.
Oh, okay, all right. I'll, I'll hold off.
Yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts, any other additions, thoughts to that we need to add?
I thought I had one, but it's on the next page.
Oh. Okay. Work with property owners-
We'll do awareness again, too.
Okay. Work with property owners, protect native endangered threatened species, provide access to information on significant ecological areas. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I, there's a number of them in this area, I think most people aren't even aware could be here.
Yeah.
Or they wouldn't, wouldn't recognize them if they saw them.
Sure.
Like Blandings turtle, for example.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's-
Oh, what about, what about, how about adding a specific thing, just, just a thought, a comment? Adding a tab on our website for natural resources and like special, Scandia special, you know, like a buckthorn removal thing and a Blandings turtle thing and a-
Well, we could, we could identify links, a matter of fact, Parks and Rec could do that. Identify links at the DNR that apply to Scandia and, that, and then, but can sort of collect it so that we don't have to go out and do that.
Curate it.
Here, yeah.
Curate it.
Carol would take care of the reptile part of it.
Yeah, so you could, you could have a tab on the website and have, have a little blurb in the newspaper pointing it out to people.
Yeah, yeah.
And newsletters.
Don't kill bull-
Don't kill bull snakes.
What do they eat? Res?
Rats.
Rabbits.
I never killed-
That's awareness again.
Yeah, yeah, right.
People think they're rattlesnakes and kill them.
Rattlesnakes in Minnesota. Okay.
Is Sherri still hanging on there?
Sherri? She's gone.
I think she's giving up on us.
I am here.
Oh, okay, hi. You were nappied.
On the second glass of wine?
Wouldn't that be nice? No, they just cleared my driveway.
Oh, nice. All right, so resilience, encourage the-
Resilience.
Encourage the use of renewable, local, diverse forms of energy to increase local resources, mitigate local risks of fossil fuel scarcity, price increases, and help meet Minnesota's, okay. Implement green steps, so that's ongoing, provide ongoing review of new technologies.
That's what really relates to energy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we can encourage the use of alternative energies through, like, easing permitting processes, but we've already done that for private solar systems. So I don't know how much easier it would get. Encourage energy-efficient housing that exceeds minimum standards. Is there any other way we can encourage that besides just working with utility providers? I mean, what, what about, like, lower permit fees for, for energy-efficient housing or, or something like that?
That's such a broad scope, though.
How about, the energy savings themselves are a reward.
So we're saying that the state, the state building codes are not sufficient, is that what we're saying?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, I, I think they actually are.
I do, too.
They're pretty proactive.
Yeah.
And sometimes, I think, over-aggressive in what-
Yeah, but like, yeah, but like, there's, but there's super-energy-efficient houses, like double-wall houses and-
Yeah.
You know, and the modular homes that are, you know, foam-filled cavities and, and those, and those concrete ones with the foam on both sides.
But, but from my experience, this is as a builder, sometimes these things get built and then three, four years down the road, it's like, that didn't work.
They're not as good as you think they are.
That was a problem.
That's a good point.
Or all those problems that people didn't perceive.
Yeah.
It's kind of like, I think, the solar thing and everything else. If, if you're going to be on the cutting edge, things, some things aren't going to work.
Yeah, you're just going to have to realize that you're going to have to, yeah, that's a good point.
They're going to lead, you're going to take a few shots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other ideas on that one?
I think that one is, again, an awareness.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and just, just this green step, uh, program.
The second green step, I think is probably in one above.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, it is in one above, but that itself is a whole set of steps. I mean, just, just saying we're going to do that is a whole set of steps.
Okay.
I, I don't know what they all are, but I think there's like 10 or 15 steps to that now.
There's about 70 or 80.
70 or 80, okay.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, see, I, I really don't know.
Green you wanna be, yes.
But I mean, that's, that is a whole action plan in and of itself. It's just that one line that says implement green step.
Yeah, okay. All right, I can live with that.
And you know, we, you know, maybe even up under one above, we can toss in a step talking about some education or public awareness again of the city's efforts.
Yeah, sure.
Just so that they can see what steps you're taking, so we're taking a more.
Lead by example, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Housing.
Uh, all right.
How far do we wanna go with this?
We're on page six, we only got to page eleven.
It seems like this housing thing is gonna open up a whole.
Is it?
Batch of stuff.
Let's see if we can, huh, huh? See if we can get, are you willing to keep going a little bit?
We have five minutes.
All right.
Can he get to housing in five minutes?
Support a variety of housing types and densities for residential uses and surrounding village center. Uh, review zoning map and development regulations for village mixed use and identify future infrastructure issues and develop housing, increase densities and plan for future development part of the CIP.
Here, I thought that, again, that infrastructure is most efficient with greater densities.
Right.
There's no doubt about it. You can, you don't have to build roads to serve one person or, you know, if you can cluster these and get the density, you can.
Yeah.
Infrastructure's cheaper.
Right. Well, and that's kind of why we're talking, you know, focusing it on the village.
Yeah, I think you're looking at your, you know, number one, you look at what are the regulations and then number two, you identify what are the infrastructure issues.
Yeah.
Of developing in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we're making a list of infrastructure issues, I think we had to consider density in that whole.
Yeah.
Thing as far as future issues.
Yeah. All right, any other, any, any other ideas to add on to that? I don't have any. Other than changing regulations, which is in there. All right, expand lifecycle housing opportunities for residents in all points of life. Review the development code regulations for uses in the village mixed use and neighborhood, village neighborhood. And work with Washington County CDA to identify options for expanded senior housing in Scandia. Again, that's kind of a regulation thing. We can't build it ourselves, so we just have to encourage.
Well, we can. They just, they have programs, they have access to different programs.
Okay. Uh, all right, encourage a range of housing choices that fit with the character of the community. Um, review development code regulations for the village mixed use, it's the same thing. And, uh, work with potential developers to provide a vi- variety of housing options in the city.
Yeah, and we talk about review development code, I think that addresses the issue that Tom's talking about, density.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, density, centralized sewer system, whatever.
Yeah. I have an idea. That I stole, but we're coming to it. Okay, we're done with housing.
I know, that was five, less than five minutes.
Yeah, there you go.
You got time.
Economic competitiveness. Concentrate on retaining and expanding local businesses in and around the village center and existing rural commercial districts. Review development code and regulate the same thing again. Develop incentive program to assist local businesses and encourage business retention. Cool. Create TIF districts to help, uh, rebuild, renovate buildings.
And I think that may, that needs to change to more of a tools, like evaluate tools.
Okay.
Instead of create TIF districts, cause that's a specific.
Too specific, yeah, okay. Review development code regulations, allow for more. Um, when are we getting to the internet stuff? Is that coming out?
Yeah, it's down below.
Okay, all right.
You'll get to it.
Okay. Actively support the retention and expansion of Scandia community scale agriculture operations. Carry out a study of the city current zoning map and identify areas for preservation of open space, arable land. Okay, I like that one. Sorry. Uh, yeah. Work with the Minnesota Food Association to provide educational materials on small scale farming. Is that too specific?
Uh, just because they have a lead there, work with outside agencies.
Okay.
That was one, another one of my thoughts as far as this density and clustering. Maybe you can have small scale farming.
Yeah, in, in and amongst, I, yeah.
In that, in that part that was set aside.
Love that idea.
We're already doing it on ninety-seven. You know, the farmer that rents his land to the, the monk community.
Yeah, they're operating here illegally.
Are they?
That's, they actually own that property.
Oh, they do?
Yeah. They own that property and.
We don't, I mean, that's one of the things in here, if you go down here, review development code regulation that in fact barriers the small scale.
Yeah, that's what I want in there, yeah.
You can't have any buildings there.
Yeah, so we need to change that.
Because you can't have.
You can't have a building without a house.
That's specifically why number five is there.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, you can have a, you can have a building without a house, as long as you own the adjacent property.
Right.
Oh, with a house on it.
That's true, with a house on it.
With a house on it, yes.
Yeah, but they don't.
But for a small scale ag, I mean, a lot of times.
Yeah, that's not gonna work for them, but.
I mean, for anybody, if you had a, you know, somebody who, you know, you know, could buy a, a piece of farmland and basically say, you can't farm in Scandia unless you build a house.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's not cool.
That's what that one is.
We need, yeah, we need to fix that. I'm excited about fixing that. Okay.
Excited about the internet.
I am. Okay, so any other thoughts on actively support small scale, community scale ag?
No, that's good though. I'm glad it's in there.
Yeah, that is good. Encourage home-based entrepreneurs and businesses.
Yes.
Review development code to permit and encourage home-based businesses. Evaluate options to meet state service minimum internet standards throughout the city and look for opportunities to facilitate expansion. Okay, now.
Then turn the page to.
Where did we go?
Dan wants to talk.
Uh, what, what page is this? This is page seven, the bottom of page seven.
Right.
Bottom.
Oh, there it is, there it is.
Page seven, yeah, sorry, I was kind of mumbling. This can involve, okay, okay.
Then go, go to eight.
Okay, before you, before I freak out. Wait, where, it's disappearing. Page eight.
Top of eight.
This is seven.
Do you wanna read off my page?
Okay, expand, oh, okay. Expand access to internet services throughout the entire city with, with internet providers to provide educational materials about available programs, businesses. Evaluate opportunities for community-wide upgrades. Okay, I've got an idea for that. Evaluate options to meet state service and minimum internet. Okay, and identify funding strategies to accelerate expansion. Actually, my idea is in relation to that. Okay, so in Sunrise Township in Shisago City, Shisago County. They have charged the entire township, they have, um, what do you call it? Uh.
Special assessment.
Special assessment for internet, the entire city. It's, it's, uh, something like a ten-year thing and it's like a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Do it.
Per property.
Do it.
It's a thousand, basically, it's a thousand dollars per house. We, if we could get with, uh, Midco, forget Frontier, get with Midco and say, how much would it cost for you to expand through the whole city? We do a, we do a, a se- a, a special assessment. I'm telling you, people would agree to this in Scandia. People are freaking out of the, I mean, they, people would spend a lot of money to get internet. I would.
Frontier is playing games.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we've already taught, had that conversation about what it costs, you know, and Steve's just working on it.
Right, right.
It's not a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Well, but, but if, if we did it bulk rate, you know, I mean, bulk rate for the entire city, Midco, you can have the entire city.
I bet there's not enough people for them to justify the cost.
People here, they're doing it in Sunrise Township.
Yeah, what is the density?
Sunrise Township, there, nobody lives in Sunrise Township.
But, one of the reasons they got a deed grant to cover part of it, their.
We can get that grant.
Well, can we?
Sure, why not?
Because you, how, how, how is Scandia gonna score versus Sunrise Township? Because they have certain criteria and one of them is businesses and critical infrastructure that's not served. Well, every, every critical infrastructure here has already been served by Midco. I mean, if you look at how that would score, I mean, we could always apply for it, but number one, you have to have your funding lined up in advance.
Okay.
And then, you know, it's a matter of how well you score for a grant.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean, it's, you know.
So, so they're part of this.
It's not as easy as it sounds.
Well, I, but I firmly believe the people of Scandia would be willing to pay gobs of money.
Well, there is, there is a new trend going on right now with, with ViaSat.
Oh, that's so terrible and it's dangerous.
Why?
Because if you stand in front of a ViaSat satellite and it's transmitting, you can sterilize yourself.
How would I be in front of a ViaSat satellite?
Can we get on to parks and trails?
Yeah, okay, 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 but can we add that?
We just got it.
Can we add that as a comment? Can we add that as a comment?
I, I was gonna put in here just in terms of, you know, leads, uh, deed, which is the State Department that covers that.
Okay. Well, but can we, but can we add exploring, specifically exploring a citywide?
We're already doing it.
We're already doing it.
It's in our own dish.
All right, it was a good idea though.
It is a good idea.
Under that parks and trails, have we, we say, prepare inventory of public lands. Have we determined how much parkland we want or need?
We have a park plan.
The inventory is, you know, what do we have now that I think you have to understand?
Yep.
And then.
The next step is what do we need?
Right.
What do we want?
So, maybe we should add in line to that a- and explore future expansion, how much we want.
Needs.
Needs, future needs.
I mean, we're surrounded by parks.
How much do we need?
By parks.
I know, that's why I'm saying, how much do we need?
Yeah, maybe we don't need.
There should be some reference in here, I thought it was, and it's probably been in many iterations about particularly those for growth areas.
Yeah.
Cause if you're trying to grow, you know.
Use, yeah.
Affordable housing in an area, you need to provide parks in those areas.
Yeah, right, right. Uh, use C, okay, so, okay, so use CIP process to develop a five-year plan for improvements. Um, next one is develop a close working relationship with other agencies and groups to enhance parks and recreational facilities to develop trails and routes throughout the city. Develop a list and meet with groups that can partner with city to meet goals. Continue work with the, uh, DNR on Gateway. Work with Washington County, uh, connections to Big Marine and establish better connection with William O'Brien as part of Scandia.
We just got Midco, by the way.
Have we did, did we develop, did we develop our goals though, have we? Have we developed our goals in, in this? First thing, develop a list and meet with groups who could partner with the city to meet goals.
What are the goals?
What are the goals? Did we meet them? Did we establish them?
So, just in general, just develop goals for parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, what are the goals?
First we have, I know, what, what's our target?
I bet you the park department or the park team commission has.
There's really a lot of.
Support a net, network of parks and trails to provide community-wide connections to serve health and welfare of residents.
Comment in there.
Okay. Develop a long-range plan to connect neighborhoods with the city via trials. Trails.
Trials.
No, the actual typo is up here.
Sorry, oh, did I miss it?
I knew you'd find one.
Oh, yeah, it just screams it.
It's through there, it's through there a couple times.
Yeah, I know.
Every time I go through, I'm circling it.
That's how, that's how cut and paste works.
Support creation of countywide bike path that incorporates county and state highways. That's a good idea. Uh, any thoughts? Uh, use park and recreation facilities, search areas and other natural resource to guide and encourage park acquisition. That's kind of what you were talking about earlier. Um, to, uh, donation, potential site acquisitions when property becomes.
Think available.
Available.
And, and some of these things are incorporated in the, in the parks plan.
Yeah, right, which is gonna be an addendum to the, to the comp plan.
Right, right. I mean, cause this, a lot of this is just already in there.
Right. So develop an inventory of high priority sites for future parks. That's, that's the developing the goals part that you were, I think you were referring to earlier, Neil.
I think it's, you also need a park goal.
Okay, sure, okay. Identify two potential funding sources and grant opportunities. Transportation, um, all right, do we need to go through these? Because these are.
Preferably.
Okay, all right, provide an integrated.
Is left.
All right, provide an integrated, internally connected, efficient street system connecting village and higher density neighborhoods to the village center. Um, develop a long-range street plan for village neighborhood district.
Cause MINDOT's gotta be a part of that too.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Along ninety-seven.
Yeah. Require street connections and development occurs.
When? When's development occurs?
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Establish context-sensitive roadway design standards that will provide, protect the narrow and heavily wooded character I've.
Whoever want that?
Okay.
Review engineering standards to provide alternative context-sensitive standards. Consider including a section on road design, the architectural design guidelines.
There you go.
I like those, all right, hey.
Serpents.
Serpents. Maintain Scandia's system of local roadways that is well coordinated with MINDOT and Washington County. Participate in county long-range planning and CIP activities. Participate in MINDOT long-range planning activities. Uh, encourage the use of non-automotive modes of transportation. That's a good goal. Provide educational materials about trails and biking. Um, provide information and transportation options such as metro mobility and transit link service. Would that, that also entail including the bike paths on all the roads?
I think we already hit that in parks and trails.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, support the development of regional and local transit options. Work with Washington County and Metro Council on expansion of transit options. Preserve the safety of regional air traffic.
That's a good idea.
Sounds funny.
Yeah.
You left, you have better than, but if, uh, that wasn't done, you'd have better internet and cell service here.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, let's wipe that out of here then.
No, I killed the cell tower across the river.
Tell them the air traffic to get it, fly higher.
Fly higher, the helicopters.
It was in the flight path of a runway.
Oh, okay.
Airport, your cliff area.
Okay.
Now across the river, you know, the High Point over there, kind of opposite ninety-seven, they wanted to build a nice cell tower there.
But they couldn't because of the.
But, uh, if you look at the flight path from the runway.
Hmm, not a good idea.
Not a good idea. So, you always need to be aware of that.
Yeah.
You're with, you know, it's kind of funny, when the Metro Council looks at airports, they look at the metropolitan airport system and forget about us, that we're within the FAA jurisdiction of Osceola's airport.
Okay.
So, that's why that's there.
Okay.
Good to know.
Huh, water resources.
Does that have anything to do with drones? Will that part have any, will you be exploring, exploring with drones?
Good point, drones.
Well, drones are regulated by the FAA.
Yeah.
So, I don't think we need to regulate them.
We're not allowed to.
We're not allowed to, there you go.
That's up to the FAA.
Yeah.
There you go.
This really deals with regional air traffic?
Oh.
I don't know, using drones for delivery would be kind of, it's common.
That would be regional air traffic.
Yeah.
The reason was because we do use drones for filming.
Sure. Yeah, but that's regulated, that's, that's private use and regulated by FAA rules.
But we're part of you, so.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Preserve and protect, okay, water resources, this is important one. Preserve and protect the quali- quantity and quality of surface water and groundwater. Uh, identify specific threats to water quality. Example, roads, salt, and explore potential options and alternatives to mitigate the threats and risks. Um, update shoreline overlay district.
That may be a don.
Requirements to minimize building impact on waterfront. And identify sensitive water areas to require protective practices in these areas. Those are the things, three things we talked about tonight, yeah. Uh, all right, improve stormwater management and lands stewardship practices. Participate in water district planning efforts to support programs to improve water quality. Work with the watershed district to identify areas where stormwater BPMs can be implemented.
Should be BMP.
B, okay.
What is, what is that?
Best practice.
Management practice.
Yeah, best, yeah.
Identify areas where the direct impacts to impaired waters can be reduced.
And we do have in the comp plan a map of impaired waters.
We do, okay.
Yeah, you looked at last time.
Okay.
Don't remember.
Don't remember too much.
On, on something that's somewhat related, it was mentioned, uh, when we were talking about this earlier, about wells that you only have a couple of wells in the area where you get nitrate information. It was mentioned.
Yeah, yeah, mm-hmm, the test wells, yeah.
Right, and you know that commercial kitchens are required to get those done yearly. And do you have access to that information?
Our wells are tested, yeah.
No, the reason I'm asking is, we, we are an independent place that has to get that information and, for example, we can voluntarily give that to the city. There may be other places that where the, the information could be, uh.
So they'd have more wells that would be more.
Cause I remember it was mentioned, there were only a couple of, of locations.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we can do about it, though, that's the hard thing.
Well, it just, it was just a matter of asking about information and it was stated that there were only a couple of locations and I'm, I'm just suggesting that just as sort of, as a tangent, there may be, there may be a number of places.
They're probably off record.
Where, yeah, they're off the record because there are places like us that, that were not required. I, I don't know if the, if the county reports it, but, uh, you know, we, we report it to the Department of Ag, but I'm not sure that they share that with anyone at the local level.
I think in any community well, that has a certain number of people, you're required to have it tested. I mean, there are certain standards.
I have the private ones.
Yeah, see, like.
Yeah, like private commercial kitchen. Now, commercial kitchens would be registered with the Washington County Department of Health.
No.
Right?
No.
Don't, do you have to be inspected?
We are inspected by the Department of Ag and the USDA.
Oh.
Yep.
So, but what about Minnesota Department of Health?
That's the Department of Ag. Department of Health, uh, doesn't do it. But I'm just saying, that's, I was wondering if you got that information or if that was.
No, we only get it for our facilities.
Okay. Well, I mean, I just, it was just a tangent, but I was thinking, there are a few other sources of, of that data if anybody's wondering what those numbers are elsewhere in the community.
Is there a way that we could, the reason I ask if those places are registered and where they are registered is, is there a way we could get a list of all the commercial kitchens that would have to do testing?
I would assume that the Department of Ag would keep that list.
And then we could just call them and ask.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you wanted the data, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Do we need that data?
Let's do a new overlay.
I guess you don't know what to do with it.
I, I just, it was just an aside, I didn't just spend ten minutes on it.
It would be, it'd be good to know if there were pockets of.
Well, I mean, I know, our number, our numbers always come back really low and yet we're right next to, you know, a cow field, so.
Yeah, sure.
So I've always thought, well, we gotta keep an eye on that, but it's, it's always just fun.
Always, hmm.
But anyway, I didn't mean to spend ten minutes on that topic, I just.
Um, all right, uh, improve stormwater, okay, so we are down to protect the natural and scenic resources of the St. Croix River corridor,[1745.94] All right, uh, improve stormwater, okay, so we are down to protect the natural and scenic resources of the St. Croix River Corridor, both within and adjacent to the St. Croix National Riverway.
Do we have anything to do with that? Do we have any input?
Well, here, we have acquired parkland.
We have a St. Croix River ordinance.
Yeah, but I mean, the National Park Service, don't they pretty much?
National Park Service has scenic easements, that's the extent of their management.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this says acquire parkland, which I think is a great idea.
First we gotta know if we need it.
That's a very old mine there, what's that?
That's that, that's that, that's that.
He's my neighbor, but are we taking his land from him?
Well, I think we should buy it.
He'd like us to buy it.
He would, let's do it.
Why do we want it?
Because we can make a park that people of Scandia can access the river on.
And you still can't access the river.
Why not?
So, you have to cross the railroad tracks, which is illegal.
We
It's, it's so steep back there, Dad.
Yeah.
I used to plow his driveway, and it was
There's no access to the river.
No, there's wetlands down there and a very steep hill.
Well, we should at least, like, be able to get close.
I think there are opportunities, you know, to, to look for it, you know, but I think that's really what the, the action is.
He should just give it to us.
For a while, I thought that was Walt.
I want it for a different purpose, Walt wants to build, build a grocery store on it, I want to make it a park, okay?
I wanted to put a racetrack in there. Big old racetrack, dirt track.
Oh, little boy.
I thought you said it was steep.
Is this the last one we got?
Yeah.
Hey, hit it, yeah.
Okay. Review, uh, lower St. Croix River ordinance and update to address issues. Ensure financial and environmentally account, environmental accountability for installation, maintenance, remediation of management of any permitted wastewater system. Search for sources of funding for septic repair replacement for households. Uh, promote Washington County SSTs, low-interest loan program and SSTs fix-up grants for low-income residents for improvement of non-compliant septic systems. That's all I got.
Do we have problems with, uh, septic systems nowadays, now?
There's a lot of systems that are old and have not been updated, partly because of the cost.
You know, you look at some of the variances we've had, and, you know, the, I know the, the one kennel that we had on ninety-seven. You know, they, you know, we required that, you know, the septic, you know, they get a septic permit. That ended up getting replaced, I mean, through our variance process.
Oh.
We've, we've actually
Gotten a few.
Gotten a few, where, you know, they looked at their septic systems and said they were inadequate.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, you know, as you go through, you know, it's something we can't force.
Put it, put it
The county knows of them, and, but I don't think there, there's just so much, they're not willing to take action.
So, there's no funding or programs to
Well, there's
help subsidize?
There are some incentive programs.
There's, there's some low-interest loan things like that.
That are referenced in there.
Okay.
But not blanket, and, you know, I don't think we have the low-income populations here.
When these pumpers, when these pumpers go out and, and pump the systems, they file a report to the county, right?
Yep.
Yeah, but that's not inspecting.
There's some standard to, to that.
Yeah, they're
We find that out.
They're supposed to inspect.
We All they do is look for baffles.
We only
Check the tanks for baffles, that's it.
My guy checks the tank.
The county does, uh, over permitting requirements.
Yeah, but that's not where the problems are.
That's your county function.
So, we don't get that information.
Problems are, I mean, some of the problems
You talk about a field that's no longer
Yeah, it's no longer functioning.
So, that's too remote.
Right, yeah, and, and, and also those systems are too close to the water table, they need to be raised up so that the
Higher what?
Nitrates
A water engineer
Or by bacteria.
Well, no, at least get, get, get reported to.
Stuff gets down into the water table.
That's why everything's a mound system now.
So
But I don't know what we could do about it, that's the hard part.
It's good that they inspect them for cracks, but it does, it's not a, you know
Though, I know what you're saying.
That only, that, the real inspection only happens when they're sold, when the properties are sold.
At least with that information.
And we've got how many people in Scandia have lived here for thirty-plus years, you know, never moved in.
Exactly, and all the little systems that are
They'll never be inspected.
So, do we have to do anything with this now?
That's still
Well, what happens is, you eventually fail, and you get to a point where you have to do something, or you've got to back it up in your basement.
Well, right, that's
I speak from experience.
So, you have mound system.
No, no, we don't have mound system, but, you know, we're, we're like forty feet above.
Just for the record, I asked Tom tonight how late these meetings ever go. He says they've never gone past nine forty-five.
Oops.
They haven't.
Well, they used to regularly go ten o'clock or later. Back when we had somebody else as a chair.
Figures I would ask that tonight. But I have visions of like eleven or twelve.
For next meeting.
And then we look at it again?
Uh, next meeting, we have a public hearing in the comp plan.
Okay, okay.
And then
The public hearing is next meeting?
Yes.
Holy smokes, wow.
And, yeah.
That'll be a big meeting, won't it?
You know, we
I hope so.
You know, and that'll give us a, a month to chew on it.
Yeah.
And then probably in June, it'll go to, you know, you know, get through here and go to council in June.
Okay.
And then the June or July one, whenever it is, we need to get the drafts out to people.
Okay. Okay.
Is it appropriate to move to a jury?
Uh, let's see, no, no, wait, no, wait.
Isn't there something else we could do for another ten minutes?
Yes. Items for future agendas. Um, poultry ordinance.
Yeah, that should get changed.
Yeah. Anything else?
The chicken rigs.
The chicken rigs.
How about, uh, cell phone towers?
How about internet?
But, you know, Xcede is working very well.
Xcede?
ViaSat.
Oh, okay.
'Cause they have a new satellite that they've just turned on.
Okay. All right, next meeting is May first, two thousand eighteen.
Move to a jury.
Hi, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.